Give it a maybe another, maybe a minute. WinCam has their whole screen up, so it looks like they're definitely ready for us. Excellent. I'll give it till six oh two and at six oh two, I'll call us to order. So everyone, we're just waiting another moment or two till six oh two and then we'll call to order. And that is six oh two. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Nixon, if you can just see that we started broadcasting in a moment, because I know you're always watching. But thank you, WinCam. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March sixteenth School Committee Meeting. Being held remotely do through Zoom due to the COVID nineteen closure. We have a very lengthy agenda tonight. We have a public hearing at the very beginning for school choice for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Dr. Evans will explain all about that when we get to that part of the agenda. We then follow with a student report. We have public comment. We have reports and discussion items. We have a discussion on school handbook updates for the elementary, middle and high school. We have a discussion on the K five working group presentation, expanded in-person learning at K five level. We have a discussion for the superintendent's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one evaluation. Which will move into some action items. We may take some of these action items out of order to match the discussion items above. We have a vote to approve the superintendent's evaluation. We have a vote to authorize the superintendent to oversee a returned five-day-a-week grade school for grades K to five. We have a vote on school choice for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Excuse me, we have a vote to authorize the town manager to execute into can enter into a feasibility study agreement for the MSBA and Lynch. For the Lynch Elementary School. We have a vote to support the twenty twenty-one ballot question for the debt exclusion override to fund Morocco Culbert and Morocco immediate repairs. We have a vote to co-sponsor Spring Town Meeting warrant articles. We have a vote to approve food service contract, one-year extension. The next item, vote to approve twenty twenty-one Town Meeting warrant articles. On accepting MGL, chapter forty, section three has been postponed. We won't be addressing that tonight. And we have a vote to approve minutes. We have Chair report, Superintendent report, future agenda items and next meeting dates. So with that, we will start tonight, because tonight, in addition to being a regular meeting, is also a public hearing. We will start in the public hearing and I will turn to Dr. Evans for the procedure, because I don't want to mess this up. I think we have to vote to move into the public hearing, or do you present first, Dr. Evans?
I think a vote to open the public hearing. The issue of school choice, and then I can explain it. We can take any public comment if there is any on the school choice matter. Then we close the public hearing. You have a vote scheduled for later meeting.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We do very few public hearings, so I appreciate being reminded of the exact procedure. So with that, I would welcome a motion to open the public hearing on school choice for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Excuse me, Mr. Vinalia, point of order?
Yes.
So, Dr. Evans mentioned public comment. This would be public comment at this time only specifically on school choice. So as Dr. Evans defines school choice, for our listening audience, that would be the only public comment at this time. Is that correct?
Correct, Ms. Bergstrom. We will, my apologies, I hadn't, I figured when I went to get people who wanted to comment on school choice, I would let them know. But you're correct. We will have public comment on any issue other than school choice under the purview of the School Committee. Will take place under item four of the agenda. What we're simply going to do after we open the public hearing is hear from Dr. Evans. And then welcome any questions during the public hearing on school choice for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Thank you very much. So I don't know if somebody made a motion in a second.
I'm moved to open it.
I'll second.
Thank you. A roll call vote required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, vote is unanimous. So we've opened the public hearing. Dr. Evans, I would welcome your comments.
Thank you. Every year, the Massachusetts Public School Districts have to decide on whether or not they'd like to participate in what's known as school choice. What school choice is, is not the same as what we call open enrollment in our district. School choice simply refers to a decision by school districts to open enrollment to students who do not live in that town. So if the school committee were to vote to support school choice, then students from other towns, surrounding towns, or any town in Massachusetts. Who wanted to enroll in our school district would be permitted to do so. The compensation that districts receive for that is set by the state. And comes to the town or the or the school district in this case directly for each student. To offset a portion of the cost for those students. Generally, districts that accept school choice students are districts who have sufficient space, staffing. And other components needed to educate students. Have the capacity to purchase sufficient materials and textbooks, for example. Have open seats that would otherwise go unfilled. And as Mr. Nixon has shared with us many times in the last few years, unlike many other districts in the state, which is for as growing enrollment. Many other districts have declining enrollment and are happy to accept students from outside their districts. As I've shared with you, I think three times thus far this year, when I've given you enrollment updates, we are over capacity. Even with the slight reduction that we're seeing with the pandemic enrollment. We are over capacity and certainly well over capacity at our middle school and high school. And so it would be my recommendation, as it has been for the last six years, that the School Committee votes not to participate in school choice. Not to accept students from outside of Winchester. Even if we wanted to do so, we simply lack space, teachers, capacity and empty seats to do so. And so we are required to have a posted hearing on school choice. That we advertised in the newspaper to let people know, particularly people from outside Winchester, who want to speak and make a case for Winchester. Accepting school choice students to do so. In general, I think most Winchester residents and certainly our parent community. Members of that group are well aware that our schools are overcrowded. And that our enrollment is likely to increase again significantly next year with some bounce back enrollment. And so again, the lack of seats makes this a fairly easy choice for School Committee, but we are. Able and welcome public participation, even via Zoom here, if there are folks who would like to speak to the public choice issue. Before we open for public comment, are there any questions from any School Committee members that I can help with?
Seeing none. I would welcome members of the public who would like to comment or ask questions on school choice for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. You may do so by raising your hands. I'll remind you that the purpose for speaking now is only to speak on school choice for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. If you have discussed comments on any other issues under the purview of the School Committee. I'll ask that you wait until we get to public comment, which is item four of our agenda. So I'll ask if you raise your digital hands if you want to speak to school choice this year. I see a question, a hand raised by a Diana Smith. Deanna Smith, excuse me, I believe. If you would state your name and address for the committee. And then you're welcome to ask a question or make a comment about school choice in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'm so sorry, that was my toddler taking my phone from me. I am all set.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to return you back to to the attendee status. And I will ask if anyone else has any questions or comments about school choice again. We will have public comment in a few moments. Seeing none, everyone will confirm that you see none as well. I would welcome a motion to close the public hearing on school choice for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, vote is unanimous. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. And with that, I'm not going to take the time to go do the vote on that now. We'll do that when it comes. But I will move directly into the student report, because I see we have both of our students are here. And it is still, as always, a school night, so I want to give them a chance to welcome them and hear what they have to say. Welcome, Evan, Caroline. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, thank you so much for having us again. At the high school, we are, they're doing the youth risk behavior survey that's coming up in like two weeks. So students will be completing this survey on March thirty-first during their regularly scheduled math block. And more information about this will be coming and people can opt out if they don't want to take it. Also, WHS is preparing for a blood drive. They have a survey out right now to gauge like how many people want to do it. And that's going to be on April twenty-ninth from ten AM to three PM, and that's WHS students only. And then another thing is that fourth quarter is coming up on April fifth. And I know Evan is going to talk about a little bit of different stuff for seniors this year that we're looking at that we got an email about today. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Evan?
Yeah, so, excuse me, going off that. The COVID pool testing has also been continuing, as a side note. This week, it was ramped up to, I believe, most if not all students with a few incentives as well to encourage people to try it out. So I think that's going very smoothly. In terms of the end of the year, like Caroline mentioned, seniors, there have been, our class officers have been working on senior events. So they are trying to modify things to make us have as good and as fun of a spring, as a senior spring as we can. That involves, for example, as it appears right now, we would not have a traditional prom. We would have a modified version of the promenade to make it COVID-safe, so outdoors and socially distanced. And they are still accepting feedback from students in terms of other normal senior events. The rest of the year for the whole school, I know I can say, speaking personally, from today and yesterday, the AA cohort. There was lots of discussion about the end of the year, about going back full-time, about the internship program for seniors. So that has been for the past few days, just kind of crazy rumors and nobody really knew what was going on. So I look forward to hearing more about that from you guys tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As always, rumors are always risky. It's always better to hear from. Principal Mahoney or somebody else. So I appreciate coming to the source. But any questions or comments for either of our two students? So I see none. I want to take this opportunity to thank you both for being so engaged over the course of the year. I realize that your year as School Committee student members is not over, but my tenure is going to end very shortly. This will be my last meeting with you two at it. And so I want to thank you for coming and really giving us the student perspective. Sometimes it's hard to get the student perspective, especially for high schoolers. Even if you have a high schooler, you don't always know what they're thinking. They don't always say what they're thinking. So I think it's been super helpful to have you come and I hope the rest of the year goes as well for both of you. And I know that whoever comes in your footsteps will have big shoes to fill, but I'm sure that they will look to do that. So thank you very much. I see that Ms. Marchand has her hand raised. I would ask Ms. Ms. Marchand, go ahead.
Very briefly, thank you, Brian. It is my last meeting too. And I just want to thank Caroline and Evan and say that you have made me very proud of our district, our schools, our students. You really represent the best of us and you give me a lot of hope that we are raising empathetic. Good citizens for our future. So thank you both very much.
Thank you so much. I know it means a lot to me. I've spent a long time on this committee and I really enjoyed it. So just, thank you.
Yeah, I've really enjoyed my two years. I know Evan's been on it for one more year, but it's been a really great experience, even though it's a little bit different this year. So thank you.
Well, thank you both very much. I will, I will tune in remotely and watch you guys each week. But I will miss interacting with you guys. So I hope you have a great rest of the year and thank you for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay, as always. You're welcome to stay here or leave when you have work you have to do. We appreciate that you are busy people. So with that, I would like to move into public comment. Before we begin public comment, I'd like to remind everyone that public comment is a chance for the members of the public to express their opinions. On matters under the jurisdiction of the committee. It's not a dialogue and the committee is under no obligation to respond to comments. As always, I'm going to try to limit public comments to twenty minutes, so we have time for discussion. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. For the briefer and more succinct you can be, the more individuals we can hear from. I want to sort of head start by saying, if you've come tonight to advocate for a full K five return to school. Please note that the governor has already directed districts to return K five students by April fifth. We will be hearing from Dr. Evans how, not if, that return will take place. I would encourage you to listen to the presentation and then reach out to us after the meeting if questions are concerned. Lastly, I would like to remind everyone that the School Committee meetings are recorded, available online anywhere in the world and saved in perpetuity. Please be mindful of making comments about specific children in the district. Before comment, public comment begins, you can do it by raising your digital hand in Zoom. Before we start, I will lower all hands so that everybody has an equal, fair opportunity to raise their hand. Then I will elevate you to speak once you've done so. So I have, with that, I will lower all the hands. And I welcome anyone to raise their digital hands if they have questions or comments they would like to make. I'm going to elevate Nicole Lentine, Ms. Lentine. You state your name and address for the committee?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Lentine and I live at four Aristotle Drive.
Thank you very much.
I would like to start off by saying that I am so grateful for my children's teachers. It feels that somewhere along the line of this past year, wanting our children to be back in school has turned into what feels like. A war of parents against teachers. As far as I'm concerned, nothing could be further from the truth. I know that a few of you have heard from me just about my, my love for the teachers, especially my kids' teachers. Without them, it would have been even harder than it has already been. You know, it's been a tough year for so many and without the love, work and support of our teachers, it would have been even harder. Every day, my daughter says to me, I can't wait to go back to school full-time. While I can't speak for others, we all know that two and a half days of school has not been enough. Children kindergarten through fifth grade have been asked to spend eleven hours of their school week doing choice boards, mixed in with lunch and recess. Forty-four hours a month that's been left for them to fill the gap. You know, we've all done our best, but ultimately it's not working. One of the first things I learned when I became a mom is that children crave structure. They crave structure in a kind and loving way. And they consistently need to know what comes next. They haven't had this kind of stability in one year. And while I've never downplayed the seriousness of COVID, the mental health of our children is dwindling. And it's time to bring back some normalcy to their lives. Our resources are tapped out and it's going to be a long road back regardless of what happens. Since June, my children and many others have been able to play soccer, baseball, softball, basketball, flag football and hockey. Without one incident of COVID spread, not one. This has been proven by my own experience and I can only speak from my own. Where there's a will, there's a way, and this has been proven time and time again. And I just want to say I really look forward to the day that we can bring this much-needed stability back to their lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to especially thank you for the kind words about our educators. We value them so much. And I appreciate whenever anyone stands up for our educators. So thank you. With that, I would like to elevate. Kayla Harrison. Ms. Harrison, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, my name is Kayla Harrison and I live at five Arlington Street.
Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
So I would like to speak about the new mandate that's coming out. For all high schools in the state having to return fully in person. And they haven't given a date yet. They're coming out with a date in April with at least two weeks in advance notice before we have to return. Fully in person. But when I found out about this, I quite frankly was scared about the safety and logistics of this. So I actually created a petition, not against the school board or anything. But I'm creating a petition that I hope to present to Charlie Baker and Jeffrey Riley. Who's the Commissioner of Education. To see if they would be willing to give individual districts the choice. Of remaining hybrid or remote due to both logistical and safety reasons. Because many schools lack space, even currently now, I know in our high school, not all classrooms have. The CDC recommended six feet of distance between desks. And with having double the amount of students in there, there's going to be an increased density. And we don't know how the transmission rates will be affected yet, because there haven't been studies conducted, long-term studies conducted. And also, students will be unvaccinated. And teachers are currently having trouble getting their second vaccinations. It's very hard to access the vaccination sign-ups. And I think a big fear for a lot of people is bringing, is not getting COVID themselves. Because we're young and our immune systems are strong, but we fear bringing it home to our families and our parents who may not be vaccinated. And may be more vulnerable to it. So I'm just here to ask for anybody who agrees with me. If you could sign the, sign my petition. My friend Amy O'Neill, she posted it in the Winchester Residence Facebook page, so the link to it is there. Or if you want the link, you can email me at K A N G dot seven five two. Sorry, K A N G H A dot seven five two at gmail dot com. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, Ms. Harrison. We always value our students when they step up. Regardless of how they step up, we like seeing them be committed in our, to causes. And I really appreciate you coming tonight. As I said, to the other students on our committee, we really value your input. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to now allow to talk. Lindsay Miles, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Sure, my name is Lindsay Miles. I'm at seventy-eight Bacon Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to start out by saying I'm speaking on behalf of my family. My son is a second grader in the full remote program and we've had a wonderful year so far. Grateful for all of the support of the teachers and the district. So this decision that we are forced to make as full-remote parents on whether or not to return full-time is definitely a difficult one. We made this decision for full-remote based on practicalities of our family, to working parents, maintaining structure for the kids. It's just what worked for us. And now, we always intended to return full-time when it was safe, which sounds like is now, which is fantastic. What we didn't anticipate in making this decision was the difficult qualifications that are being put on our decision to make this return. We've heard about a different timing for when full-remote kids would come in to the schools. We've heard about the potential for needing to make the decision before we even know what school our child would attend, what teacher they would have, classmates. And I just feel that there's been an outright lack of thought put into how this plan will impact the full-remote kids. There's no reason that the hybrid kids should be prioritized for, for, for full return over the full-remote kids. It should be an equally exciting time for all the children who are very much excited to get back into school. I'm disappointed in the plans and I would ask for an overall plan for the district that provides an equal opportunity. For the full-remote kids to return in line with their hybrid classmates. If we can't do it now, how are we going to do it in the fall? It's not like Ambrose is magically going to grow over the summer, right? So I would just ask for consideration of more thought in the, the full-remote return to school.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Going to elevate. Sarah Amori, I'm probably destroying your last name, my apologies. If you could state your name and address for the committee, please? You are muted currently.
I'm sorry. I, I don't know what button I hit, but I actually don't, I, I'm just listening.
Okay.
I put my phone in my pocket and apparently I signed up for something.
No worries. I will return you back to attendee status. And I will see if there are any other questions or comments. I'll remind you that we are. Going to learn tonight how, not if, our K to five students are returning. Seeing no additional questions, I will close public comment. And with that, we will move into reports and discussion items. Our first report and discussion item tonight is the school handbook updates, elementary, middle and high school. And I would ask Dr. Evans, I believe we have, I'm going to pull up the agenda page. I believe we have several members you would hoping to elevate. Is that correct? So it looks like it's Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Dupuy, Ms. Conis, Mr. Lynn and Ms. Phelan. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so Ms. Bollinger, if you could help me and we'll start looking together.
Just looked for Mr. Mahoney and for Mr. Dupuy and I did not see them.
Mr. Mahoney is not there.
I do not see Ms. So the public hearing on school choice may have gone more quickly than they expected and they may be joining at shortly. Why don't I just give you an introduction on the handbook changes while you're searching for them? And if you, if you're unable to raise them as panelists, we can defer that until after the presentation on the. K five return to school, that works for everybody.
That would be outstanding. Thank you.
Sure. So every year, we bring the handbook revisions before the School Committee for consideration and then vote. And every year, we scrutinize our handbooks for things that will help make our processes clear. And for alignment with any policy changes that have happened with the policy subcommittee recommendations and then vote by the school committee. Any changes to laws that we know about. And in general, the high school handbook and the middle school handbook tend to be the ones with the greatest levels of changes. But because of the pandemic, all three handbooks have fairly minor changes. The elementary and middle school handbooks really only have changes that align with personnel changes, date changes, that sort of thing. No substantive changes. I would expect that the high school folks will give a brief overview of their changes. But you can, as School Committee members, feel free to ask questions about any one of the handbooks I've sent you drafts of all three. So, so that's the process. We present changes. The changes are not substantive at middle or elementary. We take questions and then we vote to approve so that we can get the handbooks ready for distribution. Were we able to raise any of the books? No? I have not seen them yet, but I was looking for Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Conis and Mr. Dupuy.
Excuse me, Dr. Evans, I just spoke with Mr. Mahoney. He is reaching out. Mr. Dupuy and Ms. Conis were doing the presentation. On his behalf this evening, so he's reaching out to them right now.
I see Ms. Phelan here. If we want to, is she here to do elementary?
She's here for both. She's doing double duty. The other, some of the other elementary principals will be joining us as well for the discussion of the K five return. In case there were school-specific questions from School Committee members.
She's just an A.
See, you elevated her. Ms. Phelan, are there any questions, any highlights of the elementary handbook that you need to pay attention? Or was I right that they're just sort of only tech? sort of only technical changes?
There are not. There are only technical changes and thank you for having us to present this handbook. So unless you have any further questions, but like uh Dr. Evans indicated, there were very minimal changes and we're happy to present it to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Phelan. We had talked about this earlier, I think, and there are indeed no changes other than names and such things that are um would naturally change year to year. Any questions from the committee from Ms. Phelan? Seeing none. I would say that if we um are unable to get I'm just trying to see if we can find. Mr. Lynn is uh here now, so I will promote Mr. Lynn. And Mr. Lynn, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody. And um I will echo what um Ms. Phelan said. This year, um our handbook, we're not proposing any changes. We have enough changes this year. Um and again, uh I think we went through a quite a lot of work uh last year. Scrutinizing the handbooks and I thank everybody for their feedback uh for um during um the last go around. And um I believe we have made all the changes that uh was recommended. And um this year, because of the year it is, we really didn't have the chance to really take a look at whether those changes require additional changes because uh pretty much everything we do is so different than in the past. So that's the reason why we don't feel like um at this point it would be uh necessary for us to make any edits to our current version of the handbook.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lynn. Are there any questions for Mr. Lynn about McCall handbook? Uh Mr. Nixon?
So just a broad question, I think it may apply to all three. We make reference in the handbooks to the cost of lunch and it's TBD. And as you know, we have an action item on the agenda later tonight to extend the food service contract. So just a clerical question, perhaps from Ms. Whitmore, once we act on the food service contract tonight, would we be providing that information in the handbooks before we publish them? That's all.
We'll be um meeting with the uh food service um company as well as going through um the cost of lunches and uh going through all the uh D E C formulas to make sure that our lunches are appropriately priced. And then we'll be notifying the principals if there's gonna be any changes prior to publication.
So then my only follow-up would be, I think there may just be a handful of kind of administrative pieces to these. You know, we do have um an administrative position. I know in the elementary handbooks, that's TBD right now, but you know, Ms. Ms. Kirby may have a, may have a plan for that and then and that's filled in a week. So um you know, to the extent we can just fill in some of the blanks before we publish it, that would be helpful. But I I have no, nothing else sort of substantive to offer on those.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Evans, am I correct that this will come back to the committee at a later date to vote? Any changes?
Generally, we bring it back the next meeting in case uh something's brought to our attention. We don't really uh bring a draft and a vote on the same meeting, at the same meeting, so we'll bring it back. And I would um confirm Mr. Nixon's suggestion. The nice thing about the handbooks now is we used to have a hard deadline where we would print them and it would be very expensive to make changes, but now we more rely on digital copies and we can make changes as needed or corrections or fill in the blanks more readily and put them on our website. Mr. Lynn, do you still print yours as a handbook or do you, is it just digital at this point?
We post it digitally on our website, but uh we always remind the parents at the start of school year that if they would like to have a paper copy, we will make one available to them. So far, no takers.
Right. The other uh thing that as we wait for Mr. Dupuy perhaps to join us, that I'd like to point out as a kind of a good news story is that uh you may have noticed that my, in many of my communications, I'm making a concerted effort to translate um notices into our two primary languages in the district, which are Portuguese and Chinese. And I I was uh contacted by a student at the high school who's very interested in assisting us with translation. And that it has a group of students who speak a variety of languages. And so it is our intention for all three handbooks to translate both of them into our two primary languages, but then as many additional languages as we have translators available to do so. They are all three fairly lengthy documents, middle and high school especially. And so relying on Google Translate probably isn't the best way to ensure they're um hundred percent accurate and easy to read. But uh I just wanted to point that out that they will be translated into a number of languages and will be made available upon a request um in additional languages if we're able to get some student volunteers in particular to help us with that translation. So appreciate, I appreciate that offer by that student in that reach.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh Ms. Bergstrom?
Actually, Dr. Evans just answered my question. I was going to ask her if we were able to get the handbooks translated into the primary languages since our messages had started that. So it's incredible to hear this is another great opportunity for our students to get involved as well. And um it's uh it sounds like one of Mr. Mahoney's um uh senior projects could be even working on translation of some things in the district for us, some real life work there.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. We have Ms. Conus and Mr. Dupuy who are joining us. Uh I would welcome you guys and uh let you walk us through any changes that are in the high school handbook, if you're so inclined.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me on here.
Thank you for coming, both of you.
Appreciate it. Uh I know you have just a few things on your agenda, so the fact that you're able to fit us in and and have us be a part of it, we appreciate that. So I'm just trying to pull up on my end of things, the proposed changes, but while I'm doing that, Ms. Conus and I uh put together a cross-section a cross-section of our staff members um this year, which is not an easy task in light of everything that's going on. But we uh had some virtual meetings, had some in-person meetings, which was nice, and did a thorough kind of filtering or screening through our handbook. In conjunction with some um suggestions or recommendations from the subcommittee that I think Mr. Vinali, you were on previously, so we took those into consideration. It had some healthy debate. So Ms. Conus, you wanna kind of talk about those meetings, the staff members?
Sure, so as as John mentioned, we had a a team of of staff members who who I would say represented a variety of different viewpoints, but all of whom were interested in participating in the process of reviewing the handbook. And we sort of took time independently to review and comment and provide feedback. And then in our group meetings, we sort of went through that feedback and from there made changes as um as we saw fit, as we saw reflected, you know, the current state of of school. I would say in my five years at Winchester High School, this is the most thorough review of the handbook that we've done so far. We've also walked away with sort of two uh one that will end up being two additional action items. Um there was some healthy debate around the honor code part of the handbook. Um so we're actually gonna set up an additional honor code committee to review the honor code, update it. Because again, it hasn't been updated in well more than five years and then update that section of the handbook going forward as well. So it was some some really good work that we did, I think. And John, if you have, there's some general edits that we made and then some more specific edits, I'll let John start on some of that.
Sure, and just I add under one piece about the honor code and and um you know, the the conversation that we had was that the s- the staff said, well, I, you know, not it's not that not throwing anyone to the bus, but I don't think staff or students are going line by line through handbooks like we are. So it was nice to have that discussion, but some of the staff members were mentioning that if there was a way with that subcommittee of a honore code uh committee to make it digestible and a bit more meaningful for our students and if we could advertise it around the school. Um and I use my experience from our time at Lynch where we um we're taught, we had a team we put together for kind of like our ethos or our mission statement and you can, you know, I don't know if you all leave a couple of acronyms for things, but if we could tie it into our updated red and black theme um at at the high school with our honor code, we're looking to do something like that. So look for that in the future. Um as for the handbook changes, we had submitted just the the edits and the changes, updates to you separately in a separate document. But just some of the highlights um that we made sure that we were um aligned with our McCall um handbook when it came to things around attendance um and policies like that. We had some minor, you know, edits we had to make that, you know, we don't, we had a hall pass policy still in there that we took out, that we don't use anymore. Changed a little bit of wording uh when it comes to um things like disciplinary uh disciplinary actions. Sorry, and then we uh deleted and removed the end rule policy, which was part of the the subcommittee's recommendations. Um and we had a good debate about that with our staff members. Again, it wasn't used with fidelity. In my moving over from the elementary world to the high school world, I was actually quite confused by it and and had to have Ms. Conus try and do a translation for me. So if I was confused as administrator, I can only imagine our staff or students were confused. So that was um nice to have that debated, talked about, and have a staff have a good understanding of why it's not a useful part of our school handbook uh moving forward. We did have some discussion around students missing school and for excuse absences. And there were some bullets that we took out that equated the number of days students were absent with the number of days they would have to make up work. And we just struck all of that, just because each student is a case-by-case situation and if they're out for a excuse absence, especially if it's a medical need, they're all different. You can't equate two days out with two days of makeup work depending on the student's crisis or the student's medical situation. So we wanna be in tune with that um and support our students. And uh usually, Ms. Conus can attest, but the the meetings that we're with in students returning to school for a variety of reasons, the number one question we are asked and number one stress when we ask them how they're feeling is, I'm, you know, I I have a lot of work to make up. We have to, even if, even for us saying as administrators, to rest assured, we, you know, we got, we have your back. That that's still a major stressor for them. So we took that piece out. Few other items about clubs and activities, just made it easier to go to links rather than taking, you know, rather than having everything listed in the handbook. And then in line with the McCall handbook, we took out our dress code wording.
Again, that was something that was outdated, didn't reflect our current times, didn't reflect anything that we've been doing in in practice in the past five years, so um something that just reflects our current actions and also more aligns us with uh what the McCall is doing as well.
So with that, I'm, uh you're open to um taking any feedback or questions that you may have.
Thank you both very much. I appreciate the deep dive you guys did into the handbook. And I particularly appreciate matching, at a minimum, removing anything that doesn't align with practice. If you have something written in here, but you're not doing it, either you need to start doing it or you need to take it out of the handbook. So I appreciate that very much. Ms. Bergstrom, your hand is raised.
I also just wanted to thank you. Um I know that um Mr. Vinali and I were a part of the policy subcommittee that discussed the end rule. And I'm happy to hear that you not only um have deleted it from the handbook, but that you had a good discussion around it with your staff. Because I think that it's something that has been a little bit part of the culture at the high school for a while. And um I think any changes like that can um that move us forward in terms of being supportive of students and supportive of um, you know, the work they do demonstrating their accomplishment of material or a subject versus sort of the number of days that they're there or anything like that can be a difficult conversation when practices change on a staff. So I'm glad to hear that um this um while this alone may not have elicited a deeper dive into the handbook, that um one did um also come of it. And um I'm also curious to hear, uh maybe at the end, after everybody asks their questions, Ms. Conus said that you um also had talked about the honor code and perhaps something else. Were there other things that you're looking at for the future or is that the only thing that um you're additionally looking at perhaps into next year?
That's that's the primary thing. So what our hope is, is to get a committee together that actually will include students in this case. We think that students are a part of the discussion for the honor code. So get a committee of staff and students. Review our old honor code, develop, like as John said, a more digestible, easily understandable, one that doesn't necessarily take four pages to print out every year. Something that students really have ownership of, update that and then that new honor code will then be a part of next year's um handbook from then. Or not next year's, but next years.
That's, that's really great to hear. I'm happy to hear all these changes that really include the, uh really encourage the positive behavior ramifications instead of sort of always the punitive ramifications. So thank you very much for taking this work on.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Nixon, you have your hand raised.
Ms. Conus, Mr. Dupuy, hi, it's nice to see you. I just wanna, I wanna second Ms. Bergstrom's comments about the end rule. In addition to students and teachers who were confused, you can add parents to the list. And there were a number of awkward school committee conversations around the end rule um when we talked about the handbook a few years ago. So I'm also glad to see that's changed. At one point back when we did this in print, there was a huge chunk of the handbook, which was focused on athletics, which was understandably just large volume, right? And now what we have digitally is we actually have a link, right? So it takes you to a different place for athletics. But that's also though not, I don't believe that was included in our document. So I guess a question moving forward would be, since we also kind of own a review of that component, is that information that perhaps Mr. Mahoney or Mr. Aria could share with us that we could review? And then a a question may be particularly to you, Mr. Dupuy, sort of with that coaching frame. You know, the M I A A makes decisions from time to time. It certainly impacts what we say around athletics. And Mr. Aria, I think the last time he was with us talked about the potential for some shifting actually of districts, some structural changes in the M I A A, some of which might even impact us on the operating budget potentially for this coming school year. So I I'm just hungry to learn a little more about maybe what changes have actually taken place. Are we picking those up? And um can we know about them? Athletics really is kind of part of the handbook, but importantly, we kind of pulled it out as its own thing just to make it more manageable. So I'd be interested in learning more about the athletics piece at some point.
Yeah, and I I, those are all valid questions. I wish I had actually, you know, substantial uh information, which I don't at the moment, but this is all good information for me to work with Mr. Aria on. You know, we did in our handbook, it was just basically, basically consolidating and putting links to things. I do know the athletic handbook has its, is its own uh kind of entity uh on our website. Uh and then, you know, that M I A handbook is, is kind of its own thing. So when you come across situations where it comes to student athlete eligibility, whether it's, you know, for a variety of reasons, I find myself sometimes going to between the, between the three different handbooks and they all say the same thing, just a little bit differently. Can um align those a little bit better, there'd be, um it's well received what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Ms. Marchand?
I'm gonna do this all night, Brian, so I'm gonna take uh the opportunity to thank all four principals on this call and those who um are not on this call. You guys really are the heart and soul, just like the teachers and our administration of this district. Your professionalism, your integrity, your compassion really sets you apart in a very crowded field of principals. I'm honored to have worked with you and I look forward to continuing our relationship as a free community member. Without all these meetings, I might have some extra time for you. So I really wanna thank you, though.
You're welcome. Thanks. Hello to the boys.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. Uh Ms. Boloniers?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all the um all of the leadership team for your work on this, on the handbooks. And then also with respect to the high school handbook, um I very much appreciate that you had worked with staff um to incorporate their input. And then also that you're planning on incorporating student input in the future with respect to the honor code. I think that is really just marvelous. And then I also appreciate that you had removed the in-rule policy and that you had looked to or that you have made items such as um the dress code um policy. The dress code policy and tardiness, et cetera, more consistent with the middle school. So thank you so much for your work.
Welcome. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? So I would like to second what others have said. I'm really appreciative that the end rule is no longer in the handbook at the high school. I think Mr. Nixon said that number of people, including parents, were confused. I will add on to that group that school committee members were confused about it. So. I think if a number of us were confused about exactly what it would mean and people would call me and say, what does this mean? And I'd say, I don't know, call Mr. Mahoney. He, he must know what it means. So I'm glad to see it's gone. I'm also really appreciate the change on the excused absences, which I'm thinking in particular of sick people who are sick. Not having sort of the timeline. I know that the number one reason that my children will go to school, not this year thankfully. When sick is because they don't want to get stressed about having to make up the work. And while this doesn't alleviate that, the work is still there. There's an understanding that there's not some God given time that they have to make things up. And that it would be understood that you would make it up in an appropriate time. And I think that certainly in a post COVID world, we're going to be much more. Aware of illnesses, much more aware of not sending our kids to school when they're even the slightest bit sick. Which is not some, it's not a world we lived in a year ago. A year ago, you got sniffles, you're going to school. So I appreciate that being changed. I'm, I'm really very pleased with everything here. So thank you very much to all of you. And I, Xena said, said it well. So I'll let her, let what she said stand. I appreciate working with you all, although Ms. Conas and Mr. Dupree, you got three more years than me. So you're, you're, you're stuck with me at the high school. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming, all of you tonight. Dr. Evans, I believe that you're going to have Ms. Phelan's day with us, if I'm correct. But I want to just let the rest of you know that you're welcome to go back to being attendees or go back to the rest of your lives and have a good evening. And I'm glad we were able to get you guys in first because I, I know how busy you are during the day. I don't want to waste your time. So thank you very much. So with that, we will move into our next agenda item. Where's my agenda? Which is, I can't remember the exact words. K five working group presentation on expanded in-person learning. And Dr. Evans, if you would let us know who we should elevate to panelists, I'd be delighted. Ms. Bollniers and I would be delighted to go ahead with that. And at the same time, I'll give you the ability to share screen.
It would be great. So if you could elevate any of the elementary principals who are here. That would be Lisa Cormier, Kelly Puff, Lisa West. Not all could make it tonight. Some of them had conflicts. Elizabeth Drolay and Andrea Phelan is with us. Two school committee members who served on the working group are also here. And so Karen and Michelle. Should feel free to speak up as I summarize this presentation and the work we've done. There may be some other members. It was a, turned out to be a large group of about 21 people. And certainly some of the other central office administrators who are sitting here were part of that group as well. So my plan is to present a summary of the document that I shared with the whole district today with all parents and all staff members. That was the culmination of the work that the working group had been participating in for the last accelerated time period. And I would like to thank the folks who really worked so very hard. To put this plan for return together. The group I would be remiss in not really acknowledging from the outset are the five elementary principals. Who've been working for months on a variety of alternatives, trying to bring students back more fully in person. And the recent ruling by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, based on the Board of Education. Really accelerated that process. But we had been considering options for returning students more fully for quite some time. And the elementary principals had really been tackling this, but gave us a great head start to develop the plan that you will hear about tonight. So I'm going to share that with you now, if you bear with me.
I would just say, add that if there's any members of the working group that worked with you on this. Who would like to be elevated to panelists and we don't notice you at first, just raise your hand and I'll keep an eye on that so that we could, can do that.
So we were fortunate to be able to pull together a subgroup of the district COVID-19 planning and implementation team. To develop this K five return to school plan. The members of the district COVID-19 planning and implementation team worked really hard before schools started and shortly thereafter. To respond to a wide variety of expert opinions, guidelines from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the CDC. Local experts, local health experts or medical professionals. And so they also had a head start. Because they knew what the reasons were behind some of the decisions we made. Regarding our hybrid return to school. And, and I share the deep desire to have our students back fully in person. That so many parents have expressed. And it has been very frustrating for all of us to have to. Have a hybrid or full remote education for our students. But we believe that it was necessary to keep our students safe and healthy. There are some things that have changed recently. Most importantly, the vaccination of school personnel. And some additional studies done on physical distancing, social distancing. That make us more confident about our ability to return. But there are some challenges associated with that too. And I will try to explain some of those as we go along. As any of you have read in the document that we put out today, return to school is not a simple or easy. Process and will require a lot of careful work in transition planning. And some additional expense that the district will bear. So the important thing for people to know who are less familiar with the situation is that we're really proud that since September. Since the first day we could be open, we have been open. And that our students in grades K to 12. Have attended school through one of two primary instructional modes, either hybrid with alternating AABB cohorts or full remote. Our pre-K students have come back as full classes and those classes have been in session for four full days. And so pre-K is a separate issue. Pre-K students will return for a fifth day once we implement the plan for our K to five students. So the objective for me tonight is to present the plan for the full return for K five students. That plan to be implemented on April 5th with the continuation of a full remote option for those families who wish to do so. There's a link in this presentation at the bottom to the full report that I sent out to the district earlier today. Recent rulings by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, really geared for districts that had not been back at all yet. And many, many students throughout the Commonwealth have been fully remote since last March. Many of them are students in my needs districts that are in urban locations that have a lot of challenges with. HVAC or very high transmission rates in their communities. And they have been not back in person, some of them at all. And so there was some concern that there would be some students who would go the whole year without physically seeing teachers and concerns about. Physical and mental wellness of those students who were not as engaged in school. That doesn't fit the profile of our students necessarily, but it was a sense of urgency that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, at the request of the commissioner. Went to the Board of Education to, in essence, compel districts to follow the following time schedule. That all K five students would be required to shift to full-time in-person instruction April 5th. That middle school students in grades six through eight would return effective Wednesday, April 28th, that shortly after the April break. And that high school students would be also expected to return, but the DESE has not yet announced the time for that. Although they have promised to give us two weeks notice when they do give us the date. This gives us, again, a greater sense of urgency to develop a plan. And the timeframe actually between now and where we're going to fully reopen on April 5th is a very short timeframe. And will require juggling a lot of moving parts. And so we'll talk about those parts. I do want to give a shout out to the volunteers from the district and the people who were eagerly. Anxious to participate, including the five elementary principals. But you can see that the working group had representation from teachers, parents, central office, the Department of Public Works. The Health Department, our nurse leader, Jen Markham, who I can't say enough about, has served on this group. And not only did the working group members come together as a full group, but almost everyone here participated in multiple subcommittee. Work developing surveys, administering surveys, working on a variety of other initiatives related to return to school. So I can't thank these folks enough. So really it boils down to resources, staffing, facilities and operations. And I want to summarize what we've done thus far and what remaining questions we still have to tackle. To be sure we're ready for a full return for K to five students on the 5th of April. So the first action that we took was to look at our space needs. And again, we had done this in advance of the start of school, looking at each classroom. To have an estimate of how many student desks would fit at six feet and three feet. But we had to go back and look again at the three foot distance because now the classrooms have additional furniture in them. They might have additional adults in them. Some classrooms have more occupants than others. And so all of the elementary principals went around and verified the work we'd done before school started. And identified what the maximum number of occupants would be for each of the classrooms in each of the elementary schools. And we found that the average typical classroom capacity is maximum of 22, which means typically. 20 students and one or two teachers or ESPs, which are instructional aides. Some of the classrooms are co-taught classrooms and some have more students who have additional assistance who are with them for most of the day. And so in that case, the number of students in those classrooms would be slightly smaller. In order to welcome back the students, we expect to join us for the return on April 5th. There are some classrooms that are just too small to accommodate the number of students who are already present in hybrid configurations. And so some of those larger needs will be accommodated by moving those students and the teachers to different classrooms. Some of those classrooms are available because we have full remote teachers who no longer are in those classes this year. But the elementary principal is going to have to be creative and some teachers, not a lot, but a few will, may have to move some of their classrooms. In addition, one of the biggest challenges we had was looking at finding additional indoor and outdoor spaces. For lunch and mask breaks. Because the, one of the most challenging things about having, you know, 450 students in an elementary school is. We still have to have all the students six feet apart for lunch and for mask breaks. And so finding enough indoor and outdoor space for that has been challenging. We've identified space, but it's going to require taking some of the other spaces in the building that weren't typically used for lunch. Installing more furniture, et cetera. And so it's been quite a challenging undertaking, but we think we've identified those spaces. We'll also have tents available and installed and Ellen Widmore's in the process of opening those up. Large tents, one large tent at each elementary school to provide some shade space for students to eat lunch. Or to have mask breaks, particularly if the weather's inclement. The next step was to be sure we had sufficient furniture to accommodate all those students who are likely to return, both a hybrid students and a few. Full remote students. And so again, we went through an inventory to all our student furniture needs, both for classrooms and for lunch areas. Trying to be as creative as possible with the kinds of desks and chairs we had to fit the maximum number of students in each classroom. Looked at a lot of our storage. Furniture has been in storage for this whole school year. So we had to go and. Figure out what's been in storage, where is it, inventory it, and then order additional furniture for delivery by the end of March. That's all been accommodated. We had removed classroom area rugs and we're going to reinstall those. It is, the reason we did that is because when students needed to be six feet apart, we didn't want to have students gathering on rugs. In an unsafe way. It's still not going to be possible for all students to fit on these area rugs. But some students could use it for some part of the day. So we're going to reinstall those and it's a pretty big effort. DPW is going to have to help us and we may have to hire some additional support to install all the furniture that needs to be installed. In each of our schools, in each of our classrooms. Talked a little bit about lunch. It's not only an issue of finding appropriate spaces, which in each school looks a little different. As you might imagine, Morocco with its Capitaineumatorium has the, the. Less, less space than the other schools, but also has the fewest hybrid students. And so that's a good news piece. But we will have to use in many schools libraries for lunch. Genasiums for lunch, cafeterias for lunch, and sometimes one or two additional classrooms that will be cleared out and used just for lunch. And so it's not only an issue for space, but also for supervision. The supervision of lunch is going to require us to have additional volunteers. Lunch may need to take place over a longer period of time. The type of grab and go lunch that we have available so that students can safely and quickly get a lunch and move to the area that they're assigned. The supervision outdoors is going to need to increase. And so there's been a subcommittee working on. Soliciting volunteers who will go through the typical quarry checks and training. And will be asked to sign some non-disclosure documents and. Be supervised by a school person when on site. All of those things a subcommittee has been working on. But without additional volunteers, we could not accommodate students at lunch or supervise them at lunch or outdoors. The next preparation stage that we engaged in was to look at distancing and cleaning. Beth Drolay has done some research on the necessity of the disinfection and deep cleaning that we've been doing between cohorts on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Seems pretty clear from the latest research that cleaning is always a good idea. But there's not a necessity to do a Wednesday deep cleaning since we don't, all the students are together all week and there won't be two separate groups. We'll continue the Saturday deep cleaning for now. We'll continue to evaluate that. The DPW personnel engaging in a deep cleaning on Saturday are paid overtime. And it's a very expensive proposition, as you might imagine. We also, before the school year started, installed a lot of additional hand sanitizer stations. Hand washing stations, kind of portable, temporary hand washing stations, et cetera. And staffing to make sure that the, those were cleaned and equipped. DPW has been consulted to be sure that that's all adequate one school. Is, each school is fully occupied. We talked a little bit about the student supervision and volunteer subcommittee. I'd also say that one of the things that Mr. Mahoney is working on. Is looking for senior volunteers, seniors in high school. And during the last quarter of the year to do an internship to go and assist with the elementary programs. And each elementary principal has identified a need for six to 10 high school students who could assist in a variety of ways, including supervision. Indoor tutoring at the schools. So before we go to implementation, maybe Brian, it would be a good time to stop and answer any questions on preparation. Or would you like me just to go through the rest of the slides first?
Let's see if there's any questions from the committee about what you presented so far, but keeping in mind that you'll have an opportunity to ask questions at the end as well. Ms. Marchand.
This is probably very specific. Do we have a contingency plan if we don't manage to get volunteers or seniors? What happens then?
So the, the, the possibility of adjusting the schedule and asking for a waiver from the state. Is something I'm going to talk about in a little bit. The, if we're unable to come up with a conclusion that works for us, that keeps our students and staff members safe. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is hearing this from all over the state, that the six foot distancing is a real hurdle for lunches and mask breaks and so forth. The state will send a technical assistance team in order to reassess our state, our. Facilities and our personnel to see what additional. facilities and our personnel to see what additional thoughts they might offer for us before they would be prepared to offer us a waiver. So this is something we'll need to figure out. I am heartened and I think Karen Bolinese will talk a little bit about the number of people who've already volunteered and the efforts that are underway. So I think between our high school students and our community and parent volunteers, I think we feel much better now than we did three weeks ago that we will be able to engage sufficient personnel to supervise our students. My preference always would be to hire additional people to do this. But unfortunately, Ms. Kirby would verify that for the last six months, at least, almost every advertisement we put out there has met with very few takers. It's just very, very hard to get anyone to come and work in schools. I'm sure we all understand why. The timing isn't great as well. And there's not a lot of unemployment in our area. And so the pool is pretty small. So right now, the contingency plan is to work really hard with the people who've confirmed that they're very interested in volunteering and make sure that we put all the pieces in place to make them be successful as much as.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bergstrom.
Thanks, Mr. Vanelia. I had a quick question, but I also wanted to reiterate, Dr. Evans, that also the working group and Ms. Kirby also did confirm that we were still posted for additional help and that you are constantly hiring and constantly seeking education support professionals to support this work and just the work that existed in the district before we decided to return full time as well, that we were already short staff in those areas that we've been trying to hire. So I just wanted to reaffirm that as well for anybody that was listening, that it's not that we have given up trying to hire people. It's just that, as you said, there just doesn't seem to be the supply to meet the demand right now. I had a quick, sort of down and dirty, it might be a weedy question, but the tents that we're purchasing, are those, are those rentals or are they purchases? And will we be able to use them for more than one season? I'm thinking towards the fall. Is this something we'll be able to put up at the buildings in spring and then be able to use again this fall if we need them? Or is it a long-term purchase?
So these are all purchased. Ellen Widmore, I don't know if you want to speak to the tents we're planning to put up at the elementary.
Absolutely. So we had purchased four large tents and then some smaller shade structures. We are, excuse me, actually, we have five, we purchased five large tents and a handful of smaller shade structures. The large tents are being put up at the elementary schools. And then I'm going to be procuring additional, an additional four tents to go to secondary, middle school and the high school. Those will be, those will be purchases by the district and they will be able to be put up and down as, as we're able to. They're sturdy. They're, they're high quality tents. So they will belong to us and it's just the future costs incurred will be set up and taken down.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Widmore. It's just good to know that that's a purchase we have to make because of the pandemic, but something we can use and adds value to our outdoor environments at our school potentially down the line, too. Thanks.
Great. So I would just like to point out that the, just for numbers, the volunteer subcommittee has identified one hundred and seventy-three parent or community volunteers somewhere between twenty-five and forty-five at each school, which is great. Some willing to work in any school. And so if, if we could get enough trained volunteers, it'll be, it'll help us make this process much smoother. So.
I would comment that with the volunteers and the vast majority said that they might be available for one to two times a week. That was probably eighty, at my last count, it was probably about eighty to a hundred or so per morning meeting or morning monitoring or face and snack time in the mid-morning. And then at lunchtime, there were probably eighty to a hundred volunteers who indicated that they could come out once or twice a week. And then, but once you get up to three to four times a week, then the number drops off significantly.
And Ms. Bolinese, they also agreed to be quarry checked and to be trained before they work directly with children also. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And also sign a liability waiver and a non-disclosure agreement.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions on this, Dr. Evans, if you wanted to continue, that'd be great.
Sure. So we're moving into implementation now. And the first question we need to know is, how many of our hybrid students will choose to move to full remote for a variety of reasons that they and their families feel are important? And how many full remote students would like to come back and be full in person? All other families of hybrid students who are going to move to full, to full in person do not need to submit any request forms. That just is done automatically. So if the families are listening who have students who are currently hybrid students, unless we get a change request form, all of those students will be automatically placed into the five full in-person days beginning on April fifth. So we did survey families and then follow up with a change request form. The initial survey asked families to tell us whether they were interested in moving from hybrid to full remote or full remote to in-person. I have the summaries of those surveys at the end of this presentation and can talk about that a little bit more. And in general, the information needs to come to us as quickly as possible because hybrid students moving to full remote will then open up seats in home schools for full remote students who want to return. What I can tell you is there are very few hybrid students who are planning to move to full remote or planning to submit a change request. Fewer than ten, I would suspect by the end. And of our four hundred and forty full remote students who are eligible to return, we expect about twenty or twenty-five percent to ask to come back, maybe seventy-five full remote students. Of those students who've asked to come back five full days, about half will only come back if they can be housed at their home school. The other half would be willing to go to any school in the district. And as you might imagine, it's really stressful to ask any student to change a teacher at this point in the year. We have somewhere close to two thousand elementary pre-K to five students in the district. Almost all, except the four forty who are in full remote represent a small percentage of the overall number. Most students are hybrid students. And so it's our goal at the end to have as few students change teachers as possible, have as few students out of their home schools as possible. But in order to not exceed the maximum capacity in some of our classrooms and some of our schools, there might not be space at some grade levels at some schools for all the full remote students who wish to return. So having those change request forms are important. They're due tomorrow. So anyone who is listening, who has not yet submitted a form, please do so by tomorrow. That would be really helpful for us. Principals have been fielding some individual requests from families naturally to move before the process has been completed. And we've asked folks to hold off. We want to have a level playing field for anyone who wants to come back. And we want to have a good idea of how many seats are available. We won't know that until we move the hybrid students out who have requested that. So you can see it's a little bit of a moving target to try to have an accurate picture because we're very tight on space at some schools, at some grade levels. Every classroom is at its maximum capacity. At other schools, there are quite a few spaces. And so it's really the, it'll be good fortune if some people can have all of their children in their home school and there happen to be spaces. It's just because some of those students went full remote. But the vast majority of full remote students appear to plan to continue to be full remote students. They're attached to their teachers. They're satisfied with the full remote program and they are continuing for the year.
Thank you. I just see Ms. Bergstrom has her hand raised. I don't know if that's intentional or.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Renee. I just wanted to clarify with Dr. Evans. There was one group of parents that you didn't mention that occurs to me exists this year. We have a number of parents in the district that may be planning to return this fall that have withdrawn their children either to homeschool or other learning environments or private schools. Should those parents also be filling out a change form since their current, children currently aren't enrolled in the district and indicate that they would like a full return in person?
So it may be that there are some folks who are moving to Winchester and just happen, we have registrations every week throughout the whole school year. There may be some folks moving in who need a placement either in a hybrid slash full in person or may choose to be a full remote family. So the registrar is holding those applications and has asked each new family, returning family to indicate a preference. And then at the time later this week, early next week, when we make the identification of which students are leaving to go to full remote, which students are coming back from full remote to in-person, we'll process all those new registrations at the same time. So they don't need to complete a request form. They need to complete the registration process and through the registration process, they'll be placed in the pool and then assigned to a school.
So to clarify. I was going to say, so to clarify that students who were even with us perhaps in the fall and then left.
Right. I mean, the thing that is going to be painful, and as you've heard from somebody in public comment tonight, for full remote parents is to understand that it's not in the best interest of all students to completely take all two thousand elementary students and reshuffle them and assign them to new teachers or to new schools. Many, many of our students, twenty percent of our students, get very specialized services. It's hard to schedule those. You have to have the right people in place. It's a very labor-intensive process. And so it's not just a matter of finding an available seat. It's making sure that the services that students and families need are in place as well. At the time that we offered the option and moved to full remote, we told those families that if they wanted to come back, that they would go to their home schools if possible, but would be placed somewhere in the district if not possible. And in fact, there have been new registrations who have met this obstacle where there wouldn't, were not any seats in their home school and they were placed in a different school for the year. Already, and so this is going to be a painful process for full remote families to have to face the possibility that they might, if they come back, be in a different school for this year. But it's, without disbanding existing full remote classrooms and reassigning teachers, it's very difficult for us to create additional classrooms for students in their home schools. We don't have the personnel. In many cases now, we don't have the room because we're using those for lunches or other things. Or we've moved other larger classes into those spaces. And so it gets to be complicated as a, as an algorithm in a, in a difficult game to get the right people in the right places. So. I just wanted to point out that if many full remote students requested a return, that would leave many full remote classes with very few students. It might be necessary to convert one or more of those full remote teachers to in-person teachers and combine a couple of full remote remaining classrooms. At this point, with the number of requests that I'm seeing, I don't think that's likely. And I really do think the relationships between students and teachers are incredibly important. And I'm going to try very hard not to disrupt those full remote classrooms. Unless, I'm very surprised tonight, we suddenly see a lot more full remote students wanting to come back.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I see no more, no additional questions.
Okay. So what we've decided to do to place full remote students in the fairest way possible is to put all of the requests in a lottery and then take each student one at a time, depending on where they fall in the lottery order. If it's a student who's requested a certain elementary school, they'll be placed in that elementary school. And if it's a student who wants to be placed in a school where there is no space, the form will tell us whether or not that family would like to consider going to another school or would remain full remote. In that case, we go to the next name on the list. And it's really a case of matching up students' available seats and the schools that they're willing to be assigned to or not. And so we're hopeful, we think we will have about seventy open seats. It's just a question of knowing whether the seats are available at the record rate level. And it's really something that's out of our control. And so about half of the families who've asked to come back have said, if there is no space at my home school, I don't want to move. The other half have said, I will take a seat in any school available in the district. All of our elementary schools have very strong programs. All of our teachers will welcome new students to their classrooms and help with the transition. And students are generally adaptable, but families and parents know best how adaptable those students are. They're, it may be a home school, but there may not be any friends in the class. It may be a home school where the student doesn't really know many people because K or one students may not have been with us last year. And so teachers are very adept at taking students where they are and working with families to try to make them comfortable. And in this case, we're hopeful that many of the students who ask will be at their home schools. Some will not. Some will be at other schools in the district and we'll make it work. And that's the process we're going to use.
Dr. Evans, to clarify, the lottery, that we're just, we, can you just clarify a little bit about how the lottery will work for the full remote parents a little bit more?
Sure. Sure. So we'll take all of the names of the students who've requested a return. We'll do a random number generator and we'll put them in our, in a random order and we'll just start at the top and take each case as, as the, as the request is. We'll look at whether there's any space at the grade level. If the family has suggested that they, they are willing to go to a different school, if there's no space at that school, we'll look at every other of the four schools and see if there's space there. And then we'll go down the list. If families change their minds, if they, if there's no space at their home school and they've said, we want to stay full remote, we'll go back and just double check with them that that's what their intention is. And until we know which hybrid students are going to go to full remote, we don't have an accurate number of seats available at any, at any school. It's, and it really varies considerably. So one school may have ten seats at a grade level and one may have three grade levels with no seats because the classes are already at twenty-one or twenty-two. And so it really is not evenly spread across the district in terms of which schools have seats and how many there are. So we'll do that selection process and then we'll go back and see whether there are any families who are willing to move to other open seats if they're available somewhere else in the district.
Thank you. I think that clarifies it for me.
Well, one of the things that I just want to give people a heads up about is we're currently reviewing the need for some release time for teachers to transition students. It's hard to go from two cohorts of, you know, eleven or twelve students to suddenly twenty-two or twenty-three students. There are a lot of sort of physical configuration needs. There's some planning that needs to happen. So we may be coming to parents and asking for an early release day or, or one day for transition between the two models. We're still in negotiations for collective bargaining, so I'm not sure where we're going to land with that. It's unfortunate that it's probably during a week where we already have early release for conferences. So that's going to be a week with less instruction, but looking ahead to the following week where people will be there for five full days, it may be a sacrifice that's well worth giving teachers time to make that transition. We also are reviewing the time needed for full remote students to get training on all the mitigation efforts, the mask wearing, the movement around the school, the hand washing, the distancing and how that process is going to be. It really will depend on whether it's done individually or in small groups. It depends on how many students return at each school. We're going to let each individual principal handle that kind of training transition piece. There may be some students who are coming into schools who've never been in a school, never been in one of our schools. Those students may have different needs than students who've been with us three or four years and know the routine and will adapt pretty readily. We also want to be sure that our social emotional learning coaches and our school psychologists and administrators plan some activities and processes as they do every year for students to develop a classroom culture that is productive and collaborative and happy. It doesn't happen by accident. Teachers purposefully design every year when they start the year ways to build that classroom culture and make students comfortable. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that with our SCL coaches and our school. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that with our SCL coaches and our school psychologists. And finally, we do have for labor contracts, which will be reviewed to determine whether any aspects need to be bargained. My suspicion is there will be some aspects of return to school that will need to be bargained. And we're in the middle of that process now. The next thing I want to talk about briefly is our pool testing pilot, which we've been doing at the high school for several weeks. It's going extremely well in terms of the logistics and the process. I want to give a lot of credit to the folks from Public Health and our, and our lead nurse and the high school administrators for making it a smooth process. Unfortunately, participation rates are very, very low. This is typical when you do a pool testing, but it's, they're very low participation rates. And so one of the things we need to ask is, is this something that's giving us good data? Why do we have such low participation rates? Do people see value in it? Should it continue? Should it be expanded to the elementary level? If we do that, we're going to have to identify a funding source and sign a contract with an, and negotiate a contract with an outside organization to do the pool testing. Right now, the state is assisting us with that, but their assistance goes away a couple of weeks after we come back. And trying to ramp up a full return and a full testing initiative at the same time, I think is a little bit of a big lift. So we'll see where we land with that. There are some other critical parts of implementation that I just want to point out because it will have an impact on what parents and families see. So currently, our music PE and library are all taught fully remotely. Those teachers teach remote classrooms and in-person classrooms. We have to consolidate and reschedule all of those special subjects. Some specials will continue to be remote because some of those teachers have to teach remotely. Some will be in person, some will be in the classroom. Some of those classrooms are used for other things. And so it might vary by school, but there will be significant changes in our music PE and library. Similarly, many of our students, 25% of our students, receive specialized services either on an IEP or English learners or reading. Some of the questions that we ask about each student, what's the impact of the return on the existing service rates? How can we be sure mandated services are provided? We are working hard to keep the same providers where possible, same schedule where possible, but there might be some changes to those as well. And finally, we've got to coordinate all of those services because some students are English learners and get reading support and get special education support. And as you can imagine, they might be working with seven or eight different adults and those adults are not always available at the same time. But it could cause scheduling conflicts if students were to return. Some of these students are receiving some of these services remotely as hybrid students or full remote students. The other piece of this, I think it's important to acknowledge, is that for the 350 or so to 400 students who stay in the full remote program, there have to be some changes to that program. And those changes could vary by class and by student. The full remote teachers are available all day, but not all the students are available all day. Nor do we want students in front of screens for six hours consecutively. And so we are looking to have equitable learning opportunities with in-person students. So there will be some changes to the full remote program in order to ensure that, at the end of the year, that the full remote students are learning the same skills as our in-person students. But there are some restrictions about scheduling services that students have, students have in full remote service providers that they have. And so we've got to work around some of those things. So we, we ask for patience from full remote parents, but know that there is more expectation for larger group work, even if not whole class cohorts together more times per week, more hours of instruction. Then there are the public health considerations that we've been working with Jennifer Murphy at the Health Department on. And some of these public health considerations of full return include our first concern is contact tracing. So every time we have a positive case in the district, either staff member or student who's been in a school, we communicate that with our wider community and we talk about contact tracing being completed. Often, because we're at six feet of distance, there are few or no close contacts. But the implication of having a classroom full of students is anytime there's a positive student or staff member, because they're all closer than six feet, there'll be many more students who are quarantined. The contact tracing becomes more complicated and more costly. So we have to look at the impact of coming back full in-person on contact tracing and on quarantine. Similarly, if some members of a class, half a dozen, 10 students are quarantined while the teacher is still working with the other students, it's easier at the high school level to do something like stream in. But there's no, we don't have a lot of capacity to provide support for students who may be quarantined because they've been exposed to someone sitting near them. In any, the minimum number of people who will be quarantined, anytime there's a positive case at the elementary level, will be five people, all the people around them, the two, the person in front, behind and to the side. And if there are other people who've been closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes, those will also be quarantined. So these are some sort of educational and public health considerations. We also need to look at our positivity rates. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education says this is not relevant anymore. We really should be in school no matter what our positivity rates and trends are. But I think as a school committee and as a district, we really want to look at what data would require us to change in full from in-person to remote learning if we saw trends that were very concerning. And finally, kind of the great unnoticed vaccinations. There will be very few staff members fully vaccinated by the fifth, many, which is to post their last dose. But it was a positive recent ruling by the public health folks at the state level that staff members who are fully vaccinated will not be required to quarantine if they're not symptomatic, even if they're, they're close contact. And so that will enable us to keep classrooms open, even if a greater number of students are quarantined based on a positive case in the class. And so we are very grateful that many of our staff members have been able to get at least one dose. Many others are still waiting in great frustration. And we're hopeful that there'll be some movement to get most people vaccinated by the time we reopen, at least with one of the two doses required.
See, if you're okay with a question, Ms. Marshant has her hand raised.
Sure. So the state didn't change the close contact definition down to three feet? It's still at six feet?
Yes, that's the CDC and the state both say that a close contact is anyone closer than six feet for 15 minutes or more. The only thing that changed was originally, even if you were fully vaccinated, if you are a teacher close contact, an adult close contact, you'd have to quarantine. They've changed that recently. Instead of you're fully vaccinated, you won't have to quarantine unless you're symptomatic. So that's a positive step. But the definition of close contact and the reality of bringing students back fully in-person, particularly at the high school level, where students could be near many people closer than six feet over the course of six classes a day, or the same thing at the middle school, could result in large numbers of students who are quarantined. And this is something we won't know until we open and see what the impact is. It's less likely you'll have large numbers of, of people quarantined at the elementary because we really are trying to keep each classroom in full, 22 students and their teachers and aides as a, as a cohort. But for example, earlier this week, we had four positive cases at the high school who were in school, or three of the four were infectious. Had each of those been in full classrooms of five or six classes per day, you could see that that would have been, could have been hundreds of people quarantined as a result of those positive cases.
So is this going to have an impact on our nursing staff? I mean, are we going to have to get more nurses? I, I can't imagine how it's going to double or triple the workload for the contact tracers.
So the contact tracers really have a bigger job than just school. So we handle our part by looking at where students are sitting, having seating charts, being pretty strict about that. But then the contact tracers also have to take into consideration anyone they've come in contact with outside of school. So where we can be helpful is making sure that we have the seating charts and then we notify. It's just a lot more phone calls every time that there is a close contact identified. And, and you know, there's, there are certainly some downsides to bringing everybody back. This is one of the risks. And we're hopeful that our community's spread and rates will continue to be fairly low. We're seeing an uptick right now from what we had seen the last couple of weeks. But it, these are all public health considerations that I think are just important to put out there so that parents are not surprised and frustrated if their child is quarantined due to a close contact with a classmate.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Bergstrom.
Stop me if I'm getting ahead of you, Dr. Evans, but given the, Ms. Murphy explained that we would be less likely to have, be able to say students were also not in school while infectious because we've lost that sort of five-day buffer of, that the hybrid model provided us as well and because of the three foot, so everyone directly around the students will now be a direct contact. Have we explored the possibility of streaming classes, understanding that there will be more, more students out? Is that something that the district is sort of ready to take on right now? It to sort of, at least as a pilot, to sort of back up for those students who might be out?
So it's a good question. And I think the reality is at the middle and high school level, unless we stream some classes, we're not even going to be able to provide regular instruction because there are some staff members who are only able to teach remotely. There's not enough room to fit everybody in some of the classes that we need to fit, even at three feet. At the elementary level, it, it really will be situational. Teachers may be able to stream part of a day if their number of students absent. But the way elementary teachers work is that they don't do a lot of whole class instruction. So it may be that they will be able to provide some support for some students at home, but it's, it's not likely that we'll be able to stream the whole day or even the majority of the day. We may be able to provide some supports. Where we're hoping to make good use of some of the seniors in high school, for example, would be to work with students individually or maybe perhaps some of the parent volunteers. It may be that we can enlist the support of other adults to assist rather than just the classroom teacher. So, so we'll have to see. The point you're making about having had few close contacts or having had fewer students who were infectious while in school. So the definition, the public health definition of infectious is two days before you first started showing symptoms or you had a positive test. And so because of our cohort model, fortunately, many students have not been infectious while in school because they became infectious, they became symptomatic on a, not, not on a school day, a couple of days after they had been at home. It wasn't during the two school days they were in. So it, you are right that there will be more people who were considered infectious while in school and have more close contacts as a result. The cohorting worked really well to identify particularly families who might have a family member who was ill and then the rest of those students were quarantined. And in this case, it really helped us with the contact tracing because we knew how unlikely it was that students who had been home for, already on a quarantine, would have gone to anyone in school as well. So this is all not to say, this is not a reason not to bring everybody back in person. It's just, I think, making sure that families are aware, but we've discussed all these issues with public health, in that we've tried to think ahead about what the impact might be and how we can manage it.
Thank you.
Dr. Evans, I have a quick clarification that would be helpful. So the idea would be to have everybody sitting in a classroom three feet apart and the teacher would be at a minimum three feet apart from students. But understanding that students in K 1, 2, 3, probably even 4 and 5 are going to sit still constantly. There, there's some, especially if you have 22 kids in your class, I can't picture them all sitting in a row. Somebody's going to get up, there's going to be motion in the classroom. Are, are we appreciating that there will be periods of time where three feet is, is the ideal, but it's not what we're actually able to achieve? And especially when you mentioned that some high schoolers might be able to help them one-on-one from three feet, that sounds like a good idea, but I picture that being closer than three feet in practice. I'm just wondering, the practice versus the plan, are, are we realistically going to have periods of time where students and teachers are less than three feet from students?
Sure. I mean, that's, that's a valid question. There certainly are times now when teachers and students are not six feet apart from one another for brief periods of time. But the definition is 15 minutes or more kind of cumulatively. So while there may be brief times when students are closer together, we, we really have tried to train students and teachers to stay six feet apart. And now three feet is pretty close. And so it's likely that we'll err on the side of caution in the beginning if there's a positive person and quarantine more people than, you know, by the strict definition. If we're not sure, we're quarantining. The last thing we want to do is miss a close contact and then have that close contact pass law and illness to others. And so we're going to work on those strategies. What I would say is most of our classes will be pretty full with 20 to 22 students and one or more adults, and they'll have to work hard to make sure they stay three feet apart. There's no, as the health professionals tell us, there's no magic formula. It's just what's the degree of risk? And is there much more risk between three feet and six feet? The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education says no, it's not substantially greater risk if you are closer than six feet. But it, there are so many factors at play. How infectious is the person? How close were you to that person for how long? And we, unlike, you know, what the ESE has said, we have had cases of school spread even at six feet. And so it is likely that there will be more cases than we have had in the past, but we're hopeful it'll be a small number. And I, you know, I think that the overall perception of our parents, as you'll see by the surveys, is that most parents are willing to accept that risk and send their children back for five, four days.
Thank you. No, I was just going to say that's helpful because I'm picturing that, I understood that at six feet occasionally, there were periods where teachers were, and students were closer than six feet. So at three feet, we have to appreciate that there'll be at times and periods that students are likely, and teachers are likely closer than three feet. Just, I just want to, you know, go in it with, into it wide, wide open.
Absolutely. And that's why I'm sharing all of this. And again, it's not to say that I don't think it's a good idea to bring everybody back. I think we just need to know what the risks are and to give parents and families and teachers some confidence that we've thought of these and that we have, we're prepared, as prepared as we can be in this crazy year where no one knows what's around the corner. So additional considerations, not going to talk long about this.
Just briefly, my apologies, Ms. Bergstrom has her hand raised and then, then go on.
I'm sorry, just a quick follow-up and maybe you can ask one of the elementary principals to address this later, Dr. Evans. But without any parents in schools as they typically are at this time this, this year, if one of the principals, perhaps a little bit later, for the parents who are trying to visualize what the classrooms and the spaces in the buildings could look like in their heads, maybe if we could have an elementary principal sort of describe what the classrooms will look like and feel like now that they're three feet apart instead of six feet apart. I realize we don't really have a picture of that in particular yet, but if they could sort of just draw a picture for families so that, because we have been keeping parents sort of out of the buildings and you've been doing a really nice job of, when you're able to get in, posting pictures on Twitter of what those six-feet classrooms look like. And I just, if there's a way that somebody could just sort of use some words to describe what changes will happen. Because I'm imagining that, that students will be six feet apart, but as adults walk up and down the rows, they might not, or students or volunteers, they might not be three feet away from the students. But maybe I'm getting that wrong because...
Sure. So I'm going to, I'll, I'll finish my slides and then I'll ask one of the elementary principals to speak to that because how the furniture is arranged in the room and what the rooms will look like is, was a big part of the planning. We have to be sure that we have the right furniture to keep kids safe at three feet apart. How many maximum number of those desks and chair combinations or tables can fit in a classroom? So we'll come to that in just a second. Um, bus transportation, the state has res, has loosened some of the restrictions on bus transportation, but we still are very limited in the number of um, students we can transport on buses. Uh, there are a few families who may ask for bus passes, but we still have some restrictions on um, the number of students who can ride and some other restrictions on keeping students safe while they're on the bus from illness. Uh, we are going to work with Kids Bro to see if they can extend their before and after school care options to families who might be back by four days. Um, uh, there's also the rec department manages the Lynch program after school. My understanding is they're not going to run a before school option, but parents who are interested in any of those options should contact the rec department or, or Kids Bro directly to make their desires known. And I'm sure both organizations are interested in hearing from families who might want to use their services. And finally, recess and other um, places where students gather, um, uh, changes to arrival and dismissal, those sorts of things. There are space and distancing limitations that we have to work through at each school that are individual to those schools.
Uh, may I, may I ask a busing question? If a, a family currently is using busing, will they A, have access to five day a week busing, moving from two day a week busing? And B, will there be a signup or registration and/or a cost to add that on?
Sure. Ellen, you wanna speak to that?
Currently, the current bus passes that were issued were based on the two day a week um, hybrid model. So we will, um, I will go ahead and recalculate out what bus fees will be for the remainder of the year. Families that wish to um, register their students for the other three days, um, will have the opportunity to do so. And I'll get something out um, probably in the next um, several days uh, to go out to families regarding this.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Bergstrom.
Sorry, Dr. Evans. If, on busing also, if remote families are placed at schools that aren't their homeschool and it's more than two miles from their home, are we obligated to bus them?
Uh, yes, we are. Um, the surveys, uh, initial surveys that we did, there were, at the time that I put this presentation together, about twelve hundred families returned the surveys, which was a very good survey return rate. Um, and of those families, uh, sixty-two percent said that they would be willing to return their children to full in-person instruction, even if it required some students to change rooms, teachers or support services. Fourteen percent said no, and the rest weren't sure. But then when we asked the next question, given all the potential for um, changes, would you send your child for five full days of school? Um, of the twelve hundred and twenty-eight responses, almost all, ninety-six point five percent said yes, they would prefer five day in-person learning. This was not a surprise. I think uh, most elementary parents would like to see their children in school for five full days. Note that this doesn't represent all of our students and um, it's, wasn't a binding um, requests, but the majority of hybrid families, we believe, will send their children for five full days. The full remote parents returned surveys as well, three hundred and fifty-six of them of the four hundred and forty um, remote students. Um, the survey responses indicated that more than half were sure from the get-go that they weren't going to request a change. Twenty-six percent said yes, they might request a change, and then another twenty percent weren't sure. Based on the change request forms, um, it looks like we're going to have somewhere um, fewer than a hundred students requesting a change in of that. About half will only change if they can go to the homeschool. It would be my prediction, and the rest will stay full remote. So that, that concludes, and I'll stop sharing. Hmm. That concludes my presentation. Let me just escape out of here. And I think Andrea Phalen might have a picture, I'm guessing, uh, that she can share in response to that last um, question about what a classroom might look like. I also see Kelly um, Cuff is here from Lincoln, Chrissy Capodano from Lynch School, who also um, is the administrator for the Full Remote, Remote Academy. Lisa Cormier from V O I C, um, Beth Drolay from Lynch, Lynch Principal is here. Jen, uh, Markham, who's the nurse leader, is here, in case you have any uh, health questions. Um, and a couple of teachers who are on the, on the um, working group, that would be Cheryl Norris and Anna Paradise, who's uh, the W E A president also, and Lori King. Uh, Jane um, Lovins Hill um, is a parent who was on the committee. She's here and has done a lot of good work, and Marie Simpson, another parent. So um, I don't know where Andrea went. You might be off my screen.
Andrea's here.
Right next to you.
Dr. Evans, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, I can paint a little bit of a picture. I'm not sure if showing the picture would do it justice. But at Ambrose School, we have trapezoid tables that we have turned to create three rows where six students fit at three feet apart from seat to seat. And it is a little tight, however, um, elementary students like it nice and cozy and there's plenty of room for them to um, get to their seat and move to wash their hands or other activities within the classroom. And um, we are proud of how it looks. Um, teachers have been working on their own time after school and before school to get their classrooms ready right now and to acclimate the children as to what it will look like. And the students are very happy with the new look of their classroom, and we will continue to move furniture around to accommodate our new needs, but um, it, it really looks great. And I think Kelly Clef is here and she can maybe speak to Lincoln a little bit and what a classroom there looks like.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you, Andrea. Um, at our school, they're gonna be using individual desks, so um, depending on your elementary school, some people are using trapezoid tables or long tables. Um, we just happen to have um, more desks than we do um, tables, so it's gonna work out that um, our tables are set up. And it looks more traditional than, you know, in the past when we had a lot of alternative furniture and things like that. But this will enable us to um, have our full classes and um, you know, the classrooms don't look that different in, in just in that there's more desks and chairs, but you know, they're still decorated beautifully with all the children's work. Um, there are still um, you know, the, the uh, reading bins for all their reading and things like that and um, places where teachers have displayed manipulatives and things like that. Um, the one thing that I think is important for families to understand is that we always have to consider the other adults that are in the classroom. So if you have a co-teach classroom or try teach classroom where you have two or three um, adults in it, then you also have other teachers coming in that are providing E L services or special ed services or reading services, we have to account for those people coming in and out as well. So that also goes into consideration when you're looking at the number of children and adults in a particular classroom um, during each day or during the full week of um, instruction. So that's just another piece that we're, we are also considering as we put the classes together.
Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Evans, I didn't know if there were any other members of the committee that you wanted to um, invite to speak. I would do so at your discretion of the uh, uh, the, the back to school committee.
Sure, sure. So if there's anyone who served on the committee who, if I've forgotten to add anything or didn't put anything in my summary or you want to clarify anything, um, please just feel free to speak up. I'm grateful that you're here. I know that committee members probably have more questions. Um, and uh, and Jen, Markham, I don't know if you were here, but uh, someone raised the concern about the nurses workload uh, with uh, students back in full. I don't know if you wanted to um, talk about what, what kind of preparation you're doing with the nurses related to that.
I mean, certainly if we are in a situation where we have a child that's um, infectious during the school day, if we, you know, trace back the timeframe, um, and we are quarantining more children um, because they meet the criteria for close contact, it will definitely impact, it's, it's definitely more work. Um, because currently what we do, um, we assist the health department with the contact tracing within the school building. So um, we're able to talk to our teachers right away, um, just to explain that there's a, was an infectious child in your, in your room, and we're able to kind of just um, talk about where the teacher stands when they teach, you know, we just want to make sure that everyone's safe. So uh, we have been very involved in contact tracing for, you know, since the beginning of the year, and this, there definitely will be more work to do. There's no question about it. You know, we'll be quarantining more people, um, if in fact someone's infectious, and then we'll be passing on information to the health department. Um, they set the quarantine dates, but then we have to make sure that the children are clear to come back to school, that they're asymptomatic, their symptoms are gone, and that they finish their quarantine or isolation dates. So it's, it's definitely more um, following up on families.
Thank you very much.
Quick, quick point of order, Mr. Vinalia. I've seen a number of hands go up during this discussion from the attendees, and I didn't know if you wanted to take a moment to clarify that public comment period is over.
Uh, uh, I think you just clarified it for me. Thank you very much. Uh, no, public comment took place uh, during, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, and we certainly welcome feedback from the community. Um, I would suggest via email because all the questions could be um, specific to you and your family. Um, and uh, but we will not be taking additional public comment uh, during this meeting. Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Um, if any other members of the uh, the, the uh, working group that worked on this would like to raise any issues or any uh, discussion, I'd welcome that. And then I would, after that, open it to questions or comments from the committee. I see, um, no, there was a hand raised, but now it's not. Um, so if anybody has any um, thing they'd like to add about the work that you guys all did, I would welcome it. And then after that, I would move to questions or comments from the committee. Seeing none, I would move on to questions from the committee. Uh, Ms. Marshant.
I know, um, for Lynch, our, our working group, Return to School Working Group is meeting. Um, so it's just a comment that I'm assuming that at this point, all of these local, like to the school, working groups are gonna get to work because we have, I have questions around parking and, and drop-off and pickup, and so it's just a reminder that, to the community that whatever, wha, what you presented today will now go to each individual school for its own community um, input and work. Thank you.
A, and that's a great point. Um, the, the, what's been presented to us tonight i- is not pardon my saying, this is not a final product. There's a lot more work that still has to happen between now and students coming back. And in fact, we will vote to, um, we will, I will accept later on a vote to authorize superintendent to implement and plan um, and oversee the return. Um, because we understand that there will be additional changes along the way to make this work, and we don't want to be hindered by having them have to come back to us with every single possible change for a vote. Um, we sort of have the backbones of what a return will look like, and we will rely on their, their expertise in operations to make uh, it a reality.
Can I ask a clarifying question too? Um, I, I read that the, that Desi said specifically, school committee does not vote on this. And so given that it's just going back to normal, it's the, what did they call it? The default. Um, why would we need to vote on that? I mean, it has to happen, so why vote?
That's a great question. Uh, w, it has to happen, but how it happens and how it's implemented, um, there are numerous ways it could take place. And since we are, are not gonna be me, I mean, it could, we could, they could have done it a different way. They could have different aspects of this plan. And so what we, I'm actually proposing we vote is to authorize the superintendent to finalize that plan and oversee it. So you're right, it has to happen. The question really is details, and uh, it's basically allowing superintendent and her designees to work out those details without coming back to us to talk about all the details, which we would normally, we would do.
Yeah, because it's operations, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bergstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Vinalia. I, that was actually a good lead-in to the question I had. Um, in public comment, um, we heard a parent, Ms. Miles, ask today, um, what the difference, Dr. Evans, is between this return and a fall return. Um, Ms. Marshant just referred to as back to normal, but it's not truly back to normal. Is that true? Because we're still maintaining three-foot distancing in the classrooms. We're still maintaining six-foot distancing in the lunchrooms. So the capacity of our buildings and the capacity of our administrators and facilities to handle students isn't exactly the same as we expect in the fall. Um, nor do we expect to have um, a full remote academy in the way that we had it this year in the fall, if at all. Is that correct?
Correct.
So is that, that is the primary difference between this return, is it's not returning students to the classroom as we'd seen them pre-COVID, but sort of a step along the way before we would expect uh, what I would call a regular return this fall.
Right. I mean, uh, in a nor, in the elementary principles can speak to this. It generally takes us months to assign students to their classroom for the whole year to make sure that those classes are balanced, to make sure that students have the right services that they need um, to make sure that students are in a class with no one they know. We're very careful about creating class lists and assigning students to classes. Um, and this year has been nothing but abnormal. Um, uh, and the, the most important difference is the two things that you said, that we have, we don't have the capacity to keep all students, our normal population, three feet apart um, and six feet at lunch, uh, nor do we have the staff that we would normally have because we have so many teachers assigned to the full remote program who um, would normally be supporting students in the building. Uh, we have people working across, across buildings. That's why so many of our full remote classrooms have students from so many different schools in order to make it work uh, with the same staff. We essentially created a sixth elementary school with no additional uh, new personnel or budget. Uh, and so it's been very tricky to make it work as well as it has. And if most of those students still remain full remote, their teachers will still remain uh, supporting them. Uh, and uh, we will not have the capacity to create additional classroom sections at each of the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I wanted to just pick up on uh, the comment Ms. Bergstrom made. I, I actually don't think of this as returning students to the classroom. I think of it as returning them to the building, and then we're doing the best we can. So um, you know, maybe normal comes sometime next year, but um, as we know, part of this involves kind of repurposing some spaces, and we're not necessarily using all the program elements the way we would in a typical year. And I think, um, you know, Ms. Marshant raises a good question. Why do we need to vote it? Um, I, I feel like it's appropriate for us to take some some action of support, simply because I would ask everybody to reflect back on our discussion in August in our return to school plan. Remember, we amended that and said that we would hear updates from public health, that we would consider how COVID in our community and in our schools is developing, and that we would discuss not just further tightening of restrictions, but also loosening of restrictions, and that we would talk about why. And this is a big part of that. Um, it's a big, big change, but I, I think it falls into the context of what we previously discussed. Um, I also just wanted to follow up on Ms. Bergstrom's point of order and ask this question. Um, and I can't, I can't see how many hands may still be raised, but to the extent there are parent questions, Dr. Evans, could you just take a moment to share how, how would you like families to be communicating their questions? Should they in fact be coming to you? Should they be going to their building principals? Um, wha, what, what sort of direction can we offer so people can get the right information as quickly as they can?
So uh, full remote parents are going to have uh, an opportunity. There's a, there's an F A Q at the end of the document I sent today, so full remote parents have been sent that as well. Um, the full remote parent advisory group is gonna meet with Ms. Capodano, and we should, so the folks can send questions to her or the parents, um, and they can work through some of those. Uh, questions about hybrid classrooms, um, transitioning to full in-person classrooms, those are best held uh, to, to get further information from the individual schools. Um, but it really, I think there are really two groups of parents who might have questions. The parents who are considering moving from full remote back to full in-person, or the parents thinking about moving from hybrid to full remote. And so um, the person best able to answer those questions would probably be the building principal, Ms. Capodano in that case. Um, parents who have concerns about uh, or don't understand why we may not be able to uh, return students to their own school, or who, uh, that's the main group I'm hearing from now. Um, some parents don't understand. Some parents don't understand the rationale behind that. Even though we tried to be really clear that there wasn't going to be space at the schools for those students to return because we had to shift some of their teachers in those schools to full remote classrooms. And so certainly anyone who would like to express an opinion and share questions with me is welcome to do so. But she'll probably get a more direct, more detailed answer from either the classroom teacher or the home school or Ms. Capodanno.
And I think I heard you say, Dr. Evans, the group C, students who want to re-enroll in the district should be working through the registration office at central office, correct?
Right. I've met with the registrar and she can, she can give the information to them. So, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Bollniers. You are muted. I haven't said that yet tonight. It's my first time tonight.
It's always with me. It's always with me. Apologies. I had a question piggybacking off of Mr. Nixon and Ms. Bergstrom. But I believe Mr. Lynn from McCall had mentioned that in preparation for expanded in-person learning at McCall, he was planning to do some Zoom and question-answer sessions with parents as closer to the date of return to school. And is that something that we might consider among our elementary schools? Between principals and parents?
So I would open that up to Dr. Evans or any of the principals. Obviously, it's going to look a little bit different probably in every school. If anybody has a thought on that?
So the students who are returning are acclimated to school. They're both cohort A and B, or some of our C students who attend four days a week. So it's really just a merge of those cohorts who are together actually on Wednesday mornings. And one of the focuses we will be honing in on is social emotional learning. And we have asked our social emotional coaches and our school psychs to put together resources and some social stories for students. And we were going to get them to families so they could, you know, view them at their leisure when they had time to review this information with students. And our elementary teachers have been instrumental in having these conversations with their different cohorts now. So we certainly can do a Zoom and we will be providing parents at least with information via email.
Thank you. Ms. Bollniers, do you have a follow-up?
Oh, yes. And I guess just more specifically with the, with full remote students who might be returning. And maybe this is going to Ms. Capodanno as well. But if students are either coming back to their home school, or if they are assigned to a new school, will there be some sort of session where they can reach out to that principal of that particular school and ask questions?
Yes.
About things like school and distancing and masks and all that.
Of course. So the second phase in, which will happen after, will be the returning remote students. And the elementary principals, along with Ms. Capodanno, we have discussed what that would look like. And we're planning on small group orientations at each school for those students. Perhaps having their classroom teacher be available for a quick meet and greet, or some other students from the classroom. But we will be reviewing with them the procedures of the school day, hand washing, social distancing. And of course, our favorite time of day, the cafeteria. So all of those things will take place.
Can I just follow up, Ms. Valen, if you're, you're amenable? I'm picturing a significant change in timing, if not practice, for instance, washing hands before lunch. Whereas before you might have had 10 kids washing their hands, now you have 20 kids washing their hands. Obviously, this is, this is a detail. It's an operational matter. It's not something we need to be discussing and debating. But I assume this is the kind of thing that will be discussed in that, that half day potentially that's needed. Sort of, it, it's a big change to have 20 kids in a class instead of 10, to wash their hands, to line up, to line up at appropriate distances. I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to get my head around how this is going to work, you know, operationally.
Oh, absolutely. So right now, if you were in an elementary classroom, students have spots on the floor that they're very used to standing in line and waiting for their turn for hand washing. So I envision it where some of the students will continue to read or on their activity as half of the class gets up and follows that normal procedure that they're accustomed to already. And then the second half will follow in turn. It will take a little bit of getting used to, and I'm calling it like September all over again. But we do make it through September every year and kids learn and are resilient and brave. And so we'll move forward and I know it will work.
Thank you so much. Ms. Marchand.
My question is about those who go across the district. So some of our SEL coaches and others, our, our science coach, our math coaches. Well, has it been considered that maybe they can zoom into the whole classroom rather than physically move from class to class? To just maintain the cohort model a little bit better?
So I think the question is, do we have some staff members who will need to zoom in to provide services because they're working across multiple buildings? The answer is probably yes. There probably will be more so at middle and high school than at the elementary. But there's still maybe some service providers who can only work fully remotely because of health reasons or they're not fully vaccinated. And so there might be an adult supervising the class of students where someone else is zooming in to do a lesson or to provide a service in a location other than the classroom for a student or two. So, you know, we're all used to using technology and flexible ways now. And so I think we'll continue to do that. Although the beauty of everybody being back in the class can't be underestimated that, you know, having groups of students together with their teacher for the whole day, there's just a magic that happens in a chemistry and a culture that happens and develops in a classroom full of students that you don't get when you only have five or six or eight kids. Although, you know, I think the silver lining in having smaller cohorts together is that those students quickly become very close to one another and that there's no hiding, that the teachers are giving those students tons of individual attention. And for many of our students, we're seeing them progress in ways that are really astonishing in terms of their overall progress. So there have been some silver linings in the small numbers. But there's a benefit to having everybody together that, you know, has a magical element to it that we're really looking forward to. It's not all, you know, focused on strict rules and safety and procedures here. We really are joyfully looking forward to welcoming students together.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. A question from me quickly, if you don't mind. As the former finance committee member, we see a lot of things here that, that may or do have an additional cost. At some point, obviously not tonight, we're gonna, I assume we're gonna make it work. But once we made it work and we've seen what that cost is, do we, A, believe we can cover it in our, this budget this year? And if not, can we go to the finance committee and request a reserve fund transfer for any additional cost? I mean, I know we can do that. Do we foresee, envision needing to do that? Would be my question.
Sure. I mean, Ellen can speak to that. She and I have worked closely to manage any of the additional grant money that's come our way that's COVID-related. And I'm very confident in our ability to meet all the regular budget costs and the additional costs associated with bringing everyone back fully in person, with one exception. I don't believe that we'll be able to fund, if we decide to do full testing for all students and staff district-wide, I do not believe we'll be able to cover that with our regular budget. That would have to come from a town source. But in terms of additional costs, just to put the tents up, it's very, it's very expensive. You have to hire a tent company to come and put, you know, all of those little pieces. The additional furniture, tens of thousands of dollars. You know, so there's a lot of additional costs. We had kind of anticipated that and not spent down fully all of the COVID-related grants. Ellen, any, any qualms about that? Need to go to the FinCon for any additional allocations?
I don't foresee us needing to do that at all with the additional funding that we received through the Esser Grants. We would, we're, we're in a, we're in a good place financially.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just signed some amendments today that Ellen prepared in preparation of, you know, for bringing kids back. So.
So we're, she's right. Right. And we also, to Dr. Evans' point, we did curtail a great deal of spending in the, in the beginning of the school year in, you know, preparation that bringing back everybody full-time, we would have additional costs.
Thank you so much for, for thinking, planning ahead as you, you always do, Ms. Whitmore. Ms. Bergstrom.
I have a similar or a follow-up to Mr. Vinalia. What about technology costs, Dr. Evans? If we decide we need to do more streaming, more zooming in, to be able to make this work for kids, particularly kids who might be on quarantine, is that a cost we also still have grant funding to be able to cover? Or is that something that we'll need to identify as an additional budgetary cost?
Yeah. Dr. Ellen, I can speak to this. My main concern, I think, we'll need it if we decide to do streaming at the high school, need to purchase some additional camera-type devices that would amplify sound. And that's not an insubstantial amount of funding required for that. It's, but it's within our budget. The greater concern I have is all the devices we gave out. And now being short of devices to do MCAS testing and trying to scramble to reformat and reallocate devices across the district if the MCAS testing still goes forward. Even if we wanted to, I don't think we could order a lot of additional Chromebooks and have them all in and ready to give out to students. So Jen, I don't know if you want to speak to any of those technology-related purchases that might be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as early in the stages as it feels we are around the elementary planning, we're even earlier with the secondary. So identifying some of those technology needs and then figuring in them out. But to Judy's point, the bigger concern is, besides funding, just being able to have access to them. You know, every district's in the same position that we've been in, which has been scrambling for technology for a year now. So, and truthfully, the biggest problem is MCAS because, you know, MCAS is going to be running every day for like weeks. And we also have other testing that goes on at the high school. And we have to use the district devices for that. We cannot use BYOD devices. And you have to have, for someone not to be driving back and forth, 400 Chromebooks back and forth between the middle and high school, it's a real, it's a real tech issue. Truthfully, the MCAS is the biggest problem at this point.
Do we have tech we'll recover from perhaps remote students that we gave Chromebooks out to? Because particularly at the K4 level that may not need them in the classroom now?
Yeah, I mean, that may turn out to be the case. I think it's a little bit premature to do it just until we talk with teachers about what instruction looks like. You know, there'll be still that need to do some collaboration on their devices. And so, you know, we may not be wanting to take them back from students right now because we also don't want to be moving devices back and forth between classrooms every day for people to share for things. So those may just come back with the students and we may need those in the rooms. So once we have an idea of exactly what students will be here and exactly what equipment we have everywhere, we can plan better for some of that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. I saw a hand raised. Ms. Bollniers.
Thank you. Dr. Evans and Ms. Whitmore, do you have any idea right now of what kind of funding we might be looking at from the federal stimulus package or from any, or further from the CARES grant? And also what the timeline might be like on that availability of funds?
Ellen, have you had any word on allocations for the additional federal dollars that might come?
I have not received definitive numbers on additional Esser money or CARES money for school districts, only the allocations that we've already been made aware that we've received.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmore. Are there additional questions? Seeing none, I am speaking for myself, very pleased at the, the proposal. It seems like you guys have thought of just about every contingency. And I know it wasn't easy to get to where we are now. But I know it's going to be hard to get from where we are now to April 5th. And I just wanted you to know that, I want to know, let me rephrase that, what additional support you need from the school committee to make this a reality? Because you're not alone on this, even though we're not all in the rooms and we're not going to be in the classrooms. Just want to make, see if there's anything else we need from us to make this work.
So I, I just want to reiterate, this is not my plan. This is our plan. And we worked on this very hard together. And so if anyone has any needs or wants to make sure that the school committee hears about that, is on the committee, including the two parents or any of the teachers, you know, please, please jump in and, and share your thoughts.
Thank you. I should have been clear that I was using the plural your, not the singular your. Thank you. Ms. Marchand.
The spiel. Now that I have all the principals and the staff, I'm so grateful to all of you. This is such a thoughtful plan that centers all of our kids and our teachers. And so thank you for all the hard work. I can't even imagine how many hours you all have put into this process. And it's not an overnight document you've produced. This is what you've been doing for the whole year of COVID. And so I thank you and I'm, I'm very honored to have worked with you and to continue to work with you, especially my Lynchies and former Lynchies. So thank you all for this immense amount of work. I hope you feel the gratitude and respect of the community every day because you sure earned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. If there are no additional questions or comments from anyone, I would actually really like to take our agenda out of order and move directly to the vote to authorize the superintendent to oversee a return. And to do that, it's been our practice to vote, to suspend our rules and take something out of order. So I'd like to request that someone makes such a motion for me.
Show move.
Show move.
Show move.
Second.
A roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. So that would bring us to, let's see if I can find the page just to help everyone.
Mr. Vinalia, while you look, can I just also make a, a request of the community between now and April 5th to try to be gracious and kind with our elementary school principals and give them the space to do this work? Because they are going to be working night and day to make this happen for your kids. And I just would like them, like the community to hear that it's going to go faster and smoother if they have the time and space to do it. And then it will appear seamless to you when your kids arrive back in school for full days on April 5th. So I just wanted to put that out there before we left this topic.
I'd like to second every single word of that. I would throw it.
I too.
So that, I just wanted to do this while we still had everyone here since there, if there are any questions. In your packet on page 171, we actually do have 180-page packet tonight for those watching at home. We have proposed recommended authorization. Again, Desia suggested that we do not need to vote anything. I strongly believe that it's in our best interest to vote to support the superintendent and her designees to develop and implement such a plan. If someone's willing to make a motion, there is proposed language there, but I would welcome different language if someone had better language.
I have the language up if you're ready. I move to authorize the superintendent to develop and implement, implement a plan and oversee a return to five full days of in-person learning for grades pre-K through five, with the understanding that families who wish to use the full remote option will still be able to do so.
Second.
Second.
I'm moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, roll call vote required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is. Chair votes aye, the vote is unanimous. I would like to again, thank everyone on the K to five working group. And then I would like to continue to thank every, all of our educators and all of our educational support staff in the entire district. This is going to be a, and all of the nurses, pretty much, I'm thanking everyone in advance because it's going to require everyone. Rowing in the same direction to make this work. And I really appreciate all the work that went into this. So, thank you very much.
And Mr. Rinalia, can I also throw in just thanking the folks at our Board of Health who've really just helped us so much up to this point? And I understand Jen Markham has kind of been a liaison to Jen Murphy and some of the development of this plan. And they're going to continue to be real partners for us moving forward.
Well said. Thank you very much. So with that, Dr. Evans, unless you have any additional remarks, I think we will, I will give everybody a chance. To, to not staying on this Zoom as a participant to return to being attendees. And thank you all for joining us tonight. And then we will continue on in our agenda in just a moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your contributions, all of you.
And I, I'm not sure if people can do that on their own or if we need to do it for them, but they seem to all be disappearing from our screen. Hopefully they're, everybody's welcome to stay on as an attendee, should they so desire. So. Let's see. I think. It is just us now.
And then there were twelve.
So I'm glad we gave that the time it needed. I mean, it's eight thirty-three PM. We still have a lengthy agenda ahead of us. The next agenda item is a discussion on the superintendent's twenty twenty twenty-one evaluation. I appreciate that all the members of the committee submitted their summative evaluation reports to me. Which walks through progress towards the superintendent's goals as well as assessment on the performance standards. I had the task that chairs have every year to try to consolidate all of the comments. As well as the ratings so that they could be a single report from the Winchester School Committee for Dr. Evans. And I'm pleased to say that this year, we were all on the same page to a large extent. We, I don't think any of you will be surprised when you hear what the summation of her summative evaluation report. And so what I'd like to do, the, the evaluation tool is a seven-page document that looks at various. Excuse me, performance standards as well as the goals. I'm going to focus on the final, excuse me, the first three pages of this document. I should have, you should all have received, committee members should all have received a copy of this earlier today in anticipation of today. So if you'll indulge me, Dr. Evans, I'm going to read some of this and work my way through it. This year, Dr. Evans had five performance goals. The first was a student learning goal to develop and execute effective plans, procedures and operational systems to address students. And staff members emotional and social needs in both hybrid and remote programs. On all of these. Performance goals, the superintendent can be rated anywhere from did not meet to some progress, to significant progress, to met. To met the performance goal, to exceeded the performance goal. And I want to be clear upfront that meeting a performance goal is what we expect out of our superintendent. We expect her to meet her goals. It is a rigorous standard. It's someone who meets their goals is presumed to be a highly effective administrator. And so in that first student learning goal, we collectively agree that you exceeded. The. Exceeded our expectations, the expectations. On that, the student learning goal. You had one professional practice goal this year that was to support the effectiveness of a strong and connected district leadership team. On that goal, we judge that you met. The, the goal. You had three district improvement goals. The first was to develop and execute effective plans, procedures and systems to address effective plans. And systems to address effective plans, procedures and systems to address students and staff members' safety. And health needs in accordance with COVID nineteen, DSE and public health protocols. And that you were judged to have met that goal. The second one was to collaborate and maintain a safe collaborative learning environment that motivates students to take academic risks. Challenge themselves and claim ownership of their learning. And that it was judged that you met that goal. And the last district goal, improvement goal of yours, which was to support the Lynch MSBA project, it was deemed that you met that goal. So the way this document works, I then go back to step one. There were the, there are three goals to look at, professional practice goals, student learning goals and district learning goals. Professional practice goals, you were judged to have met. The student learning goals, you were judged to have exceeded. And the district improvement goals, you were judged to have met. That moves on to the performance standards. There are four performance standards and that's what pages four through seven detail in here. The first perform, and I'm not going to go into this in much detail. I'm just going to let you know, instructional leadership. You were judged to be exemplary. Exemplary, to be clear, a rating of exemplary indicates the practice that significantly exceeds proficient. I guess I should have said there are four ratings possible, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. A rating of exemplary indicates the practice that significantly exceeds proficient and could be a model of practice regionally or statewide. In instructional leadership, you were rated exemplary. In management and operations, you were ranked proficient. In a management, family and community engagement, you were ranked proficient. And in professional culture, you were ranked exemplary. Looking at all of these rankings together. You were judged to be proficient. Overall summative performance is rated to be proficient. And I just want to reread what proficient means because I'm not sure I did. Proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is the rigorous expected level of performance. Along with all of the comments that I collected, I tried to summarize. Comments from all of the committee members and put it into three paragraphs. I will read those. These are the words of the committee members, not my own words. Dr. Evans and the district have faced unprecedented challenges in the COVID nineteen pandemic of twenty 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 twenty-one. Throughout the year, she has led the district team steadily and worked tirelessly within the parameters of the DPH and CDC. And evolving guidance from DSE to reopen schools in the hybrid model and remote model simultaneously for families. Under her leadership, Winchester Public Schools were able to remain safely open to hybrid learning for the entire year with minimal school virus spread. Now she faces the next challenge to pivot to reopen schools fully for the rest of the year. And characteristically, she has tackled this task with determination, careful planning. And evaluation of many possible scenarios in the face of uncertainty. As this will be Dr. Evans' last evaluation as our superintendent, is worth looking at her tenure, full tenure in Winchester. She has been a collaborative partner of the Winchester School Committee and has shared the vision of this current committee and past committees to improve curriculum delivery. And assessment practices, build collaborative teacher teams, improve culturally proficient practices. And daily student experiences with our district. Her achievements are many and include among just a very few of them. Instituting later start time for our teams, teens, expanding our world language offerings. And developing a strong partnership with the MCIA to improve student learning and assessment. In summary, Dr. Evans has managed the district with great skill and care over this pandemic year and throughout her tenure in the district. And is committed to a careful transition to the next superintendent, interim superintendent in June. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. I, I consider this a very positive performance evaluation for you. I would welcome from committee members, brief comments if they have anything that they feel I did not adequately capture. Keeping in mind, this was consolidating comments from all five of us. If there's something you feel I didn't adequately capture, I would welcome that. And then when that is done, I would certainly welcome any comments from you, Dr. Evans, if you have any in response to the performance evaluation. Ms. Marshant?
Last meeting, so I get to speak. Brian, first of all, I want to thank you for that difficult task. I think you were fair and, and graceful in how you've done this evaluation. I'm sure you're not going to be surprised to know that I ranked you, excelled. Exceeded whatever the wording was on everything. I think that unprecedented doesn't quite capture enough how. What you were faced with this past year and how you managed it. You had the state giving you all kinds of. Random and complete advice and, and rules. You had parents tugging at you every which way. Full remote, full in school. You had teachers who were justifiably concerned about their own health. And their children's progress. You, I mean. I can't even imagine how many different directions you were pulled in each and every day. Never mind the, the physical space constraints and the financial constraints. And you handled it with unbelievable grace and. Just you stuck to the things you knew would work and you pivoted when you knew something else would work better. And so I am beyond grateful to have learned from you and worked with you. I honestly can't wait to see what you do with your next chapter. Because there's still a lot of information you have to share with us. I consider you to be one of the top superintendents in our country. And I think you have a lot to teach, especially some of the newer superintendents and others. So I am deeply grateful on behalf of my children and our community students and teachers. I think you are a phenomenal professional. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. If other members of the committee have anything they would like to add, I would welcome that. I, I should be clear for Ms. Marshant and myself who are leaving. This is not only a final evaluation, but also a farewell to Dr. Evans. For, for the rest of you, you will have that opportunity for the farewell later on. So I, I won't belabor that point. So I just want to give you an opportunity. If you feel there's anything else you'd like to have captured publicly that I did not capture from, from your personal reviews. Seeing none, Dr. Evans, I would just welcome if you have any, any thoughts. And if not, we will just move on. I don't want to belabor the point.
Sure, just very briefly, I'm so grateful for your support and encouragement. This has been a committee that has worked tirelessly for the last year and even well before that. And when I say it's been more than a full-time job for each of you to support our district with your work as school committee members. I am so aware of how hard you have all. Worked to collaborate with each other, with our teachers, with. Our collective bargaining units, with all our employees, with the towns. Elected officials and appointed officials and. The, the rest of the employees in the town of Winchester, I think we've all pulled together to do our best for our students. We haven't always been as successful as we'd like because we strive for excellence. But in general, I think we can be really proud of this year and the proud of the work we've done together over the last six years. The parents and families should be very grateful for our school committee members, especially Pazina and Brian who are going off. And much as I will welcome and assist the new interim superintendent. I know that the other remaining school committee members will help the new elected school committee members transition into this group as well. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, just like this wasn't my return plan. Anything that got accomplished in this district got accomplished by the other people who were here tonight, whose faces you see now, the central office administrators, the. Principals, our teachers, our custodians, our nurses, our bus drivers, everybody did their part. And I just could not be prouder of our district and of our students especially. Every time they present, you can see the guidance they've had from so many adults, from their families and from their teachers. For so many years to empower them to become independent, critical thinkers and contributors to our society. So, thank you for your feedback. Thank you for your. Critical and not so critical feedback over the years. Each of you has pushed me to be better. And I've wanted to be better for you and for our students. And I still feel like I have a lot of room to grow. But I'm on to my next chapter soon. And the fact that you took the time to. Complete the evaluation process in the way that you did just shows what quality people you are and how committed you are to this role. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. This leads directly into the action item listed on page one seventy. Which is a vote to approve superintendent's evaluation as presented. Again, you all received a copy of the document earlier today with the other pages that I won't go into detail, but you were able to see everything else that was in there. And I would welcome a motion to approve as presented.
I make a motion to vote to approve superintendent's evaluation for twenty 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 twenty-one as presented.
Second.
A roll call vote required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollnies?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the vote is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Evans, and thank you committee members for helping get this done in the middle of all the other things we have to do right now. I'm, I'm pleased that we were able to get it done. With that, that moves us on to. The next agenda item, which is the vote for. School choice for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We had the presentation earlier. Dr. Evans, if you could just reiterate what your recommendation is as far as the vote on school choice for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
Sure. So it's my recommendation that you vote not to participate in school choice the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Due to lack of space.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? I welcome a motion.
I move that the Winchester Public Schools not participate in the school choice program for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year because of increasing enrollment. And space limitations.
I'll second that.
And if no additional discussion, a roll call vote?
May I make one point? May I make one point, Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
When we meet in person, you know, pre-COVID, we usually make this distinction that there is a difference between school choice and open enrollment. And certainly we're all aware and maybe some still participating tonight, watching us are aware. That in some of our elementary schools, you know, we may have one available classroom and in some cases two. Enrollment does wax and weigh in on a school by school basis, but we continue to be a district that has more sections than we have space. And so the action we're about to take tonight is really a district-wide action that says we can't accommodate students because we're full. But I hope that parents who are listening and are concerned about where we have that available space understand. That the open enrollment discussion, which will come later, probably in May. Is always a lever that the superintendent looks at carefully and often pulls. And when and where she feels we have space available in other schools. Space, not just for one school year, but space that could, that could accommodate a third grader who's going to be their third, fourth and fifth grade. I feel like Dr. Evans has always been good about finding those space opportunities and bringing them to us. And, and my memory is, in fact, we've had more interest in. Open enrollment in the past couple of years than we have before. So. I'm sort of stealing Dr. Evans' thunder. I don't know if there's anything else she would care to say about it. But these are two very different issues, but fundamentally they're still about space. And I hope that parents understand that when the administration feels we do have space available at a school. Again, given the unique qualities of enrollment in that particular elementary district. They're always good about bringing that option forward to us because that's an opportunity to relieve overcrowding elsewhere, should families be willing to move.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. We have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Seeing no additional questions. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom? Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Um thank you, Dr. Evans, for presenting that tonight. And that moves us on to the next agenda item, which is. A vote to authorize the town manager to execute and enter into feasibility study agreement with the MSBA for Lynch Elementary School. Um Dr. Evans, I don't know if you or Ms. Widmore are going to uh present on that. I would um. Welcome some background if there's anything that could help us as we prepare to vote for that.
Or I'll let Ms. Widmore uh explain that to you.
Certainly, this is just a requirement from the MSBA um for um the school committee. Um as well as the select board to vote to um give the town manager um the ability to enter into um. The contract um for feasibility and sign it on the towns, the town and the district's behalf. The select board voted um and approved this um motion um a couple of we- a couple of meetings ago. And this is just the last stage and then uh town council can um can uh review all the information and submit their final certification.
Thank you, Ms. Widmore. Are there questions on this agenda item? Mr. Nixon.
Very much a standard item. We did the same thing on the high school in VO. The town manager is the town's chief procurement officer. So all we're really doing is saying she has permission to sign off on some large expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
I'm happy to make the motion.
Please.
I move that the school committee authorize the town manager to execute and take all actions necessary. To enter into the feasibility study agreement with the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Lynch Elementary School.
Second.
So we got a second and a third. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Marchand.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the vote is unanimous. Uh thank you, Ms. Widmore. I appreciate uh that description, explanation. And with that, we will move into the next agenda item. I would um point out this next agenda item, which is a vote to support the twenty twenty one. Ballot question for the debt exclusion override to fund the Morocco culvert and Morocco immediate repairs. I would just point out to you that the agenda, excuse me, the full packet does not have. Um the items in the uh correct order. So the first item to consider is the uh. I- i- it's it's written a little bit um clumsily. The vote to support the twenty twenty one ballot question for the debt exclusion override, it's correct in your packet. And I am going to pull up uh if I can. I'm I had it ready to go, but now I've lost it. Um the packet so we can see uh. You'll give me a mo- a moment to do this. Ballot question. Uh I want to just make sure we have the the correct ballot question to be considering. Um so uh. Sorry. I'm trying to find it. Um I don't know if someone else has it available, because what we have in the packet there is actually the uh. Town meeting warrant article. And what uh we've been asked to since at our pre- at a previous meeting, when we had the joint meeting with the select board, we um. Uh supported having a uh ballot question for a debt exclusion override. They asked if we could formally vote to support the override um that's happening on the election day on March thirtieth. And I'm just trying to quickly find the the the.
Oh yeah, I believe I have it handled.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bollinger. If you're able to either read that or put it up there.
I have it if she doesn't.
It's hard to actually chair and get the documents up. It's very.
I believe I believe it's, I believe it's in the PDF record.
I had it up.
That is not what I was looking to share.
I have uh the the school department warrant article for Springtown meeting or the.
No, no, this is, we're looking for the ballot question.
I have that too. Ballot question for the debt exclusion override to fund Morocco culvert.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, exactly. That's the language and that somehow didn't make it into our.
Okay, I can read it.
Thank you.
So the article says to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money. To make extraordinary repairs to the Morocco Elementary School, including engineering expenses. And all other costs incidental and related thereto. To determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise. To determine whether in accordance with section four dash two of the Town of Winchester Home Rural Charter. The town manager shall have the authority to enter into contracts and approve payments with respect to the project. Or to take any other action relative thereto. Shall I read the moved? Do you want me to read the move part as well?
So I I think that that is actually, that's the problem. I think that we have in here is actually the Springtown meeting motion. That's the Springtown meeting motion, not the ballot question language, is what I. Because. What we've been asked to do is.
So that's the school repair project, and then there's a separate one for the Morocco school culvert project.
Yeah, and those are the two ballot, um those are the two town meeting articles. So if I may back up for a second. The funding for the uh two Morocco projects is funded by. The debt exclusion override that's taking place at the end of uh this month. That will fund the two projects. Then at town meeting, they will expend those um uh funds. By voting two articles at town meeting and uh I'm just trying to find because we had it sent to us, the language. For the town meeting article.
To have it again. Look, I could try it again. Let's see if I'm sharing the correct bit. Of course, now I changed my screen again. Okay. But let's see.
So this, that's the problem. This is for the town meeting.
That's what I just read, yeah.
The town meeting, that's the town meeting. Um the language on um. So might I suggest that.
Scroll.
It's the the other one's just the culvert. Those are the only two in the packet and then the Q and A.
And and I thought we had sent, um the Q and A is actually for the um um. Whole motion. I'm trying to find it uh.
What's the difference, Brian, between what you want us to vote on in these two articles?
So what we're being asked to um vote on is that there is an override taking place on um March thirtieth. And that is a request for a debt exclusion override. And we're voting to support that we will have a debt exclusion override for those two um projects. The the, it's all the same. Um and we already have supported this, this uh select board asked us to. Um vocally support the override again. What I'm looking for is a um a motion to support the override. Then we're also looking for um uh to co-sponsor the two town meeting articles. So that's a separate um separate agenda item, and I just don't can't find it. Mr. Nixon, do you have it by any chance right there? Because you probably do.
I don't, but I was actually just gonna try something a little dangerous. I'm actually, I'm actually happy to wing something to show our support for the ballot question. Article is actually more sort of specific because we will be, if you will, recommending favorable action.
I have the actual text.
Ms. Marchand has the actual articles, excuse me, the actual um override. So if you could share.
Sure, it's shall the, shall the town of Winchester be allowed to exempt. From the provisions of proposition two and one half, so-called, the amounts required. To pay for the bonds issued in order to install additional culverts behind the Morocco. Elementary school for flood mitigation purposes and to make extraordinary repairs to the Morocco Elementary School. Including engineering expenses and all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, and that's the document that I was having a hard time finding right now. So that is the override question that will be on the ballot along with school committee members, select board members um on March thirtieth. And we have already uh expressed our interest in having this moved forward. We were asked if we could give um a affirmative vote that we support the override vote as being put forward. Um and if somebody is willing to make such a vote, I uh a motion, I would welcome that.
I move for us to um vote in favor of the ballot question as read.
Think that works.
All right, second.
Thank you. That, my apologies for what was a long way around to get to there. Um I uh if there's no additional questions. I would welcome a roll call vote, Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Marchand.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reaffirming our uh previous vote um to s- um to support the override that's taking place. Which leads to our next um agenda item, which is to vote to co-sponsor the town meeting warrant article. So that's what those two documents are. At town meeting in uh May, no sooner than the first um Monday in May. Uh they will have two warrant articles. Those are the two documents that I will share with um you. Because now that's what we have in our packet. There will be two warrant articles. The first will be um. A warrant article for the Springtown meeting for the Morocco school repair project, also known as the Morocco life extension. Program. This will be to actually expend funds should the override pass. The second is to vote to um do the Morocco culvert. A school culvert project, that's to replace the culvert. These are the actual um articles um that will be at town meeting. Um these were correctly in your packet, um uh as opposed to the other one that was not. And so what we've been asked to is whether we want to co-sponsor these two articles. That is to say that when they go into a town meeting, it will say who's putting forward these articles. It will say the select board and the school committee or just the select board. Um and it is up to us whether we want to co-sponsor these articles or whether we choose not to co-sponsor them. Um co-sponsoring indicates our support and uh. So that is what we have at hand, and my apologies that this got sort of twisted around. I hopefully it makes sense now. Um and I would, uh Mr. Nixon, if you have any, I would welcome questions or comments.
Sure, I just wanted to add to the list. So um uh as a fourteen-year Morocco parent, I'm excited I get to vote on this twice. Uh because capital planning voted last week unanimously to co-sponsor, and I hope we will do the same here tonight. On both articles.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. So in theory, they would read um put forward by the select board, the capital planning and this. Committee and the school committee, should we choose to vote um yes on one or both of these articles.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Ms. Marchand.
So the text of the the motion reads to support the projects. And you're at, should we tweak that to be a cosponsorship? Because we've said we support it, right?
It it should, it should read that we um co-vote to co-sponsor. So the action item in the agenda was to vote to co-sponsor Springtown meeting um warrant articles, the two warrant articles. Um first one for the culvert and one for the um immediate repairs.
So on page um one seventy nine, the warrant article cosponsorship is specific to rental of school facilities.
That's a different.
Which hasn't been presented. The on page, exactly, let me see.
Yeah, that's a different one.
Yes, I know, but I'm just comparing the language for us. On page one seventy four, it says vote to support the Morocco. It doesn't talk about cosponsorship. So I'm just asking, does that need to be changed to a cosponsorship role?
Uh yes, it does. So the motion should be.